...announcements, but I will await those announcements until we start the development review items. It is Parks and Recreation Day, so I do want to take a moment to start in with Parks and Recreation. But before I do that, I do want to take a moment to do the minutes of the planning board hearings. So we have the minutes of April 16th, April 30th, May 7th, May 21st, and June 4th. Is there a motion?
Move, Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington.
And then let me double check, and while I'm looking, I see Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Geraldo. Do I have the other commissioners on?
Bailey's on.
And Vice Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have Commissioner Dornier yet? Okay, so we have those three. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. Excuse me. Okay, the ayes have it. With that, we're going to go to item 3C. We have Parks and Rec Day. We're going to go with the presentation. Thank you.
Let me lay this one here.
Oh my God, I am so sorry.
Who's presenting for that? Is that Mr. Carter? Or Mr. Tyler?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mr. Carter is going to be on momentarily. He was having a few difficulties getting on, so he and his team will be on in a quick second.
You know what? Let's do this. Can we go to the legislation? Ms. Hightower, are you on?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Raina Hightower in a governmental affairs. I'd like to discuss CB 38 2020, which creates a new use entitled athletic field for profit and permit use in the RR and RT zones with a new footnote, subject to certain circumstances. Staff has numerous comments and concerns regarding this bill. We would like the county council to defer action on this bill so that staff can get a better understanding of the bill's goals and objectives. There's a footnote in the bill that suggests that an existing approved DSP for townhouses can be used to grade the new site for the new athletic field use. There's no requirement for a new DSP for the athletic field. We believe that the new proposed athletic field use could be compatible with other residential zones, but we would need to discuss that with the county council committee of the whole today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hightower. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. So everything else is as set forth in your memo?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move that we should accept staff's recommended position of oppose as drafted and provide needed comments to county council.
Commissioner Geraldo.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let me make sure. Let me take a roll call for that. We have Mad... So Commissioner Washington, you vote aye? Okay, Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay. Commissioner Dornier is not on? Okay.
I'm on.
Oh, you are on? Okay. You're not on the screen. Okay, thank you. Oh, there you are. Okay, thank you. The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so are we okay? Mr. Tyler, or do you need two minutes? Mr. Tyler, sorry. Do you need two minutes?
I think Mr. Carter is on. Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Vice Chair Bailey and the planning board members. For the record, my name is Steve Carter, Deputy Director for Facility Operations, and this morning you will be hearing a brief overview of where we have gone with the youth and countywide sports division. This came about from our county executive, Angela Alsobooks, to put together a one-stop-shop operation for youth sports. So I would like to introduce our newest division chief, Tommy Pelucci, who was hired in mid-April. He is a graduate of University of Maryland College Park and a 20-year employee of De Matha Catholic High School, and he is a Prince George's County resident. As you all know, this was a national search to bring in someone that can move this initiative forward, and the department is very happy to have selected Tommy Pelucci. So I am going to now turn it over to Tommy and his team to give you a brief overview of where we have gone in regard to the youth and countywide sports division. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. A quick question. Is the presentation going to be brought up for us? I thought that was my understanding. If not, I can do my best.
Do you have it? Hold on a second. We're checking. It's item 3C.
Yep.
The youth sports initiative. We have it. Youth and Countywide Sports Initiative.
Okay, great.
I mean, I have it. It wasn't transmitted to you?
I don't think we have it. You just got something.
Okay, so somehow it wasn't transmitted. But we have a... I don't know what happened there, but we have it. I'm sorry. But we all have copies of it. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Pelucci.
That's all right. Do you want me to just move forward with this?
Yes, you can move forward, because we can follow along with our copies. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you, Steve, again. It's been a great two months. As you mentioned, I started on the 20th. There we... I thought it popped up there. But I'm looking forward to develop this division. The first slide that you would see is kind of an opening slide. You could move to the next one, which sort of introduces our leadership team. You can see I'm listed there as the division chief, as well as Atuya Cornwell, our Assistant Division Chief, Katrina Williams, Assistant Division Chief, and then Vernita Potts, our Administrative Supervisor. You can move on to the next slide if you can see it. What questions will be answered by our team this morning? Number one, why is there a new division? Number two, how has its staff grown since creation? Number three, what makes up the division? What are the pieces? Number four, what accomplishments are there so far? And then number five, what is the plan moving forward? So if you have that presentation, you can move on to the next slide. Why? Now, what is our purpose? There's some text on the screen or on your presentation that you can read. I'm going to summarize it for you. This division is a needed destination for the child or parent of a child seeking information about sports or wellness opportunities in our county. At the same time, it's a landing spot for adults seeking that same information for themselves, whether it's instruction, recreation, or competition through league play, finding a field or faculty facility to practice, camps, clinics. YCSD will be a centralized access point for information about all sports, health and wellness programming, both public and private, in our county. Go to the next slide if you can see it. As you can see, there was an existing sports, health, and wellness division, which is now divided into two separate divisions, aquatics and athletic facilities at the top, and then YCSD below. Youth sports, adult sports, athletic field permitting, health and wellness, the Sugar Ray Leonard Boxing Center, Prince George's Stadium, where our Bowie Bay Sox play. That falls under the Youth and Countywide Sports Division. There are other underneath aquatics and athletic facilities, such as golf, ice rinks, tennis facilities, et cetera. You can move to your next slide if you can do that. How's our staff grown? Well, you know, prior to the split I just mentioned, there were 14 total admin, sports permitting, and health and wellness positions in the former division. Now, YCSD has 24 positions of its own, and the team is growing, as 20 of those 24 have been filled, and we believe that number will be 22 very soon and complete at 24 by midsummer. And then we've got two more to add in fiscal year '21. And so earlier I talked about why YCSD, but now you will give me the next slide, but now you will give me what or who is YCSD. We are sports programs, athletic field permitting, and health and wellness, and those three units plus our admin team make up the division. At this point, I'll turn it over to Atuya Cornwell, Assistant Division Chief, who oversees sports programs and athletic field.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Tommy. Good morning, everybody. My name is Atuya Cornwell. As Tommy mentioned, I serve as Assistant Division Chief within our Youth and Countywide Sports Division, and on a daily basis, I have the thing to work with closely with our sports programmers and our athletic facility permitting team. Through that daily operation, we're working to create and maintain a central database, website for all sports organizations and leagues and teams throughout the county, as well as diversify our sports offerings across the county to include collegiate sports college opportunities. So we talk about those sports like volleyball and lacrosse, as well as continuing to create and maintain close partnerships with our youth county sports organizations, colleges and universities. And lastly, centralizing and streamlining the scheduling of athletic facilities in the county. As you go to the next slide. When we talk about our sports delivery, it is very important and essential that we continue to maintain our sports delivery partners. We have several strategic partnerships that have really provided our youth in Prince George's County with exposure and opportunity to amazing sporting opportunities, to quality instruction for example through JTCC, our first tee golf program, of course, with our special relationship and positive relationship with the Prince George's County Boys and Girls Club, as well as the Prince George's County Public School System. And then another one that I would like to highlight today is our RBI baseball and softball program. Just this time last summer, we were able to take a group of young girls softball team that qualified to go play in a regional competition in Raleigh, North Carolina, and they definitely made us proud in that competition, and they also were highlighted at the Fox Five zip trip at the National Harbor last year as a hometown here routine. So once again, these type of partnerships really afford the opportunity and present quality experience for our youth in Prince George's County as relates to sports, really empowerment through exposure. As we talk about our athletic field permitting operation, this team has a great opportunity throughout the year to connect our user groups, our adult groups, as well as youth groups to quality fields in our inventory across the county. These opportunities afford these user groups to be able to have practices, games, as well as just that opportunity to connect with family members to have the cookout and the fun kickball competition. With that said, one of our highlights over the past couple of years was through a partnership through Major League Baseball and the Washington Nationals. We were able to enhance a location at Walker Mill Regional Park, so that baseball field received several field upgrades, a new irrigation system, a new scoreboard, covered dugouts, as well as a new bleachers for that has changed structures added to them as well. So these are the type of partnerships that we're looking forward to continue to build in the future as it relates to being able to enhance the quality level of play and experience for our user groups. This past year, throughout sports in our Youth and Countywide Sports Division, as well as through the department, we're very excited and we definitely want to celebrate the wins. We were able to see our swim program grow from 35 to 107 participants, as well as our junior golf program enhancing its participation level. This past winter, we had 78 teams participate in our inner center basketball league, as well as we were able to connect with the Junior NBA Skills Challenge. Later on in the year, the qualifiers from our competition will be able to participate in a rescheduled event to compete against other participants around the region. Also, we continue to grow our youth lacrosse program. This past winter, we saw over 300 participants participate in our Winter Lacrosse Series. Another win that we're super excited about is bringing onboard our youth sports strategy consultant. Last December, this consultant contract was awarded to Barry Dunn. Barry Dunn is currently engaged and working closely with a core team member from our department to be able to deliver those deliverables on the slide, as you see now. Some of those core areas, of course, coming up soon will be user engagement and marketing and outreach. We're super excited in the near future to be able to see the marketing page launch for this project, and it will be hopefully coming on here in the early several weeks, here in the next... Over the next time in the summer. So in the summer months, we'll be seeing that soon. So we're definitely excited to continue to work with it. With that said, I want to turn it over to my co-pilot, Katrina Williams. She talks about our health and wellness unit.
Thank you, Atuya. Next slide, please. Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Katrina Williams, and I serve as one of the Assistant Chiefs in the Youth and Countywide Sports Division. The health and wellness team was formed with the mission of creating healthy communities through our people, our parks, and our programs. Three of our major goals are to implement a variety of programs and initiatives that are culturally informed and inclusive, that promote a healthy lifestyle, and that connect our residents to our parks, programs, and all that the department has to offer. Next slide. We've made a real concerted effort to chart the department's success through the creation of the Health and Wellness Action Plan, and this plan was developed to create strategies that support Formula 2040 objectives and NRPA pillars while aligning with other national planning efforts and addressing the health disparities in our county. Next. And so our main bodies of work fall under the major themes of the Health and Wellness Action Plan. With our signature programs, we offer large-scale programs such as yoga in the parks and fitness in the parks. Those programs are free and available at many parks and open spaces throughout the county. Now, to further reduce barriers and to promote physical activity, the Get Fit Mobile Unit goes to a variety of parks and facility to provide free fitness, nutrition, and general wellness programming. So on the staff training front, we forged a partnership with the University of Maryland Capital Region Health, and they have provided the mental health first aid training for youth and many of our staff. The adoption of the Healthy Vending Resolution has resulted in our Smart Snacking Initiative and the transition of over 170 snack and vending machines to provide healthier options. We continue to talk with our partners, such as the Prince George's County Health Department, Suburban Hospital, NRPA, and plenty of others, to provide evidence-based wellness programs such as Walk with Ease and Don't Learn and Move. And I'm happy to announce that as we continue the work of improving all of our health outcomes in the county, we've been able to anchor ourselves in several collaborative groups and partnerships that have been mutually beneficial since the Prince George's Healthcare Action Coalition. Next slide. Thank you. And so we've had plenty of wins that we would like to celebrate as well. In April of 2019, we hosted our first Wellness in the Woods event at Watkins Regional Park, and we were celebrating the park prescription movement and the benefits of being in nature. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we weren't able to host this event this year, but we look forward to doing so next year. We increased our reach and participation of several of our signature programs, which I previously mentioned, and then we were delighted to be featured in the NRPA Healthy Aging in Parks video. We did such a great job with the Walk with Ease program and many of our senior aging or active aging programs throughout the county that we were paid to visit by some CDC officials, and NRPA featured us in their video, which is posted on their website. The Health and Wellness Action Plan actually received the NACPRO, National Association of County Park and Recreation Officials Planning Initiative Award as well, so we were very happy about that. And so, next slide. All right, so what's our game plan moving forward? Primarily, we continue... We plan to continue to work with all of our partners on program delivery for all ages and ability. We really want to continue to increase the program delivery of the Get Fit Mobile Unit. This mobile unit has really been key in reducing barriers of transportation and cost, and to those participants who just can't always reach several of our facilities on given days. And so we've been able to take this out into the field and really get kids moving. Part of our goal was to start online resources, and then with COVID, we found ourselves thrust into our Mindful Mondays, our Wellness Wednesdays, and our Fitness Fridays. So I am hopeful that you were able to see many of our Mayas celebrations move to our online platform, and we plan to continue with much of that virtual programming as well. We will continue to increase our partnerships because through their resources and expertise, we've been able to make a larger impact. And then we'll continue to expand our outreach efforts to include more of our community events just to simply raise awareness and again, increase our interest in our programs. And I'm going to the next slide, and now I'll turn it back over to Atuya to speak about his future.
Absolutely. As we continue to grow our team, we're super excited to be able to develop additional programs for our young girls. Talking about to stick to a girls' lacrosse program, which will be the predecessor as it relates to growing to eventually having a girls' lacrosse league. Also, we're looking to expand and have our girls' shot clock basketball league across the county, as well as continue to develop the game of youth volleyball by offering clinics and courses throughout the year. We all started looking forward to expanding the successful footsaw program that was in the northern area of the county to countywide, as well as once again, continuing to expand our girls' program. We're looking forward, as well, to continue to work with Barry Dunn to create the youth sports strategy, and we're excited about the great work that's going to come out of there. I'll turn it back over to Tommy this time.
And with that, I would like to just thank both Atuya and Katrina for their presentation this morning. I've really been surrounded by and supported by a great leadership team, to also include Vernita Potts, who's our admin supervisor. At this time, if there are any questions, this group will do our best to answer them.
Okay, and let me say this first. First of all, welcome, Mr. Pelucci. We get a chance to see you virtually because you were brought onboard during this climate, so we didn't get a chance to see you and have you do a formal in-person presentation. Nonetheless, you've done a superb presentation virtually, and we thank you and we welcome you, and we know you come with tons of experience, one bit of which is working with a dear, now recently departed friend of mine, the coach, Coach Morgan Wooton, who served with us, served on this planning board for many years.
I was lucky enough to play for Coach Wooton, too.
Yeah. Oh, wonderful and great, great, great guy. But anyway, thank you and welcome. Thank you to the team, Mr. Cornwell, Ms. Williams, Ms. Potts, who's not on here. Everybody did a great job. This has been a... And also to Steve Carter and the whole, the entire department, this has been a tremendous undertaking. When we were first assigned with this, we all gasped, but then we do what we do and rise to the occasion, and that's exactly what each of you has done. I don't know... We may or may not have questions. I know time is very tight here during this portion of it, so let's see if the board members have any questions for you. But we all have our printed PowerPoint presentations, so we can go through it somewhere, and of course, I've had separate briefings. Madam Vice Chair, any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
I just wanted to say thank you to the team for the presentation, and one question, what is footsaw?
So footsaw is a version of soccer. It's played on a smaller field with less numbers. You're really able to sort of access different facilities, different spaces, to be able to play the game of soccer without needing a large rectangular field.
Thank you, Mr. Pelucci, and welcome again.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, I want to thank for the excellent presentation. Very excited about it. Thank you for explaining the footsaw to Commissioner Washington. It's more of an urban sport, but I did have a question with regards to our partners. I saw that University of Maryland Regional Health System is one, and so is Suburban Hospital. I imagine we reached out to, for example, like MedStar, which is making the big push into the county as well, and Kaiser? Ms. Williams?
Yes. Actually, we've partnered with Kaiser, my specific team. We worked with Steve Carter some years ago. We secured funding and had the support of Kaiser to our Haven program that's over in Blainsburg Community Center. Haven is health and wellness, arts and cultural heritage, and E was the environment, volunteerism. And so we've worked with them on several fronts there. Then also, yes, I just actually had a call with MedStar this week. They are really interested in supporting us with their number of facilities, training capabilities, and coaching preparation, classes and modules and things that they have. So we'll be connecting more on that as well. Yes.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you to the entire team for a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dornier?
I just want to thank you for the good presentation as well. This is helpful. And ask, what kind of online virtual programs do we have? Because my son, he's super young, has been getting interested in like yoga and meditation kind of stuff they say, and so do we have that?
Wait, hold on a second. Hold on a second. I'm going to stop you right there for this because time is tight. And the reason I have to stop you is because we have so many. It is unbelievable, the virtual programs that we have. So can we reach out offline? I was thinking that this would have been a good day for that presentation, but next Parks and Rec Day for the virtual, because I think we have well over 80. We have... I think we have 80, and for six... For young folks, and then we have teen camps, then we have Spanish-speaking camps, virtual camps. It is amazing. So I think we need to do that offline because there's just so many, but we will reach out to you. How about that? Thank you.
Eric, can I have one minute, please?
Okay, because otherwise we can't get to my other thing that I have to do.
Real quick, I just want to acknowledge Kathy Consoli, who was acting, and then Tara Stewart, who was actually acting in AAFD NYCSD before we hired Tommy Pelucci. So I want to recognize those leaders that also have helped stand up the Youth and Countywide Sports Division. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I know it's almost 10:30. We have to start development review. I do want to take a moment and say that we have a resolution in support of Juneteenth. I'll come back to that, I guess. And then, but one of our... We have a second resolution, which I want to get on the table before we do our development review, and it is a resolution of... Drumroll, please, for the one and only Debbie K. Tyner. And it is saying that... And I can't read the entire thing because of time now. Whereas Debbie Tyner has ably and conscientiously served the citizens of Prince George's County for an impressive 35 years, and actually it's 37 if you count the seasonal, right? But 35 years as a key leader of the Prince George's County Department of Parks and Recreation of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. And there's... And whereas throughout her extensive career with the Department of Parks and Recreation, Debbie has demonstrated excellent leadership skills and has risen through the ranks serving in key leadership positions, including Assistant Director for the Upper Marlboro Community Center, Facility Manager for the Blainsburg and Cedar Heights Community Centers, Regional Director for Central Area, Division Chief for Southern Area... Let me catch my breath. Deputy Director for Area Operations, and Acting Director for the Department of Parks and Recreation, representing her amazing leadership skills. So I'm going to turn to our colleagues, and we want to give... This is her last time appearing before the planning board on Parks and Recreation Day, and I didn't want to cut short her time to say kudos, Debbie Tyner, the inimitable Debbie Tyner, and thank you for your many, many, many years of service. You look exactly the same, and some of us remember when, those decades ago. So I'm going to turn to my colleagues and see if they have anything to say, and then we'll offer you an opportunity. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, I know we're rushed for time, but I do want to take a moment to thank you to Debbie for her commitment, her dedication, and her service to the city of our beloved Prince George's County. Some of us remember waiting for you, and we thought Debbie was our personal Parks and Recreation guru and advisor.
Wait a minute, Dorothy. Everybody else is muted because there were people... Can you unmute her? Hold on, Dorothy. Okay, go ahead, Dorothy. Go ahead, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Debbie for her commitment and her dedication and her service to the citizens of Prince George's County. Some of us consider Debbie as our own personal Parks and Recreation guru and advisor. We called her for everything, no matter what the issue was. She always found where to send the issue, but we always turn to Debbie to answer our questions. I spoke to former councilmember Hilda Pemberton, who also asked me to send her best regards because she was another one who worked with Debbie on almost every possible conceivable issue. We wish her well, and we pray that God will continue to bless her as she charts the next phase of her life, which I'm sure is going to be even more exciting, if that's any way possible, than working with us in Parks and Rec. So thank you, Debbie, for all that you've done. Best wishes, and I will see you on the block.
There we have it. Okay, let's turn to Commissioner Washington.
Hi, Debbie. I just wanted to say congratulations, and it has been an absolute pleasure working with you and getting to know you. And Commissioner Bailey says she sees you on the block. Hopefully, I'll get a chance to see you on the golf course, since you have a little bit more time. more time now. Maybe we can get in some. Wish you all the best.
Okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
I wanted to just ditto the comments of Commissioner Bailey and Commissioner Washington, and I have one anecdote to show the type of commitment that Debbie had to the county. So, when the Woodrow Wilson Trail Bridge first opened up, before it was as popular as it was, I asked, I told her, because, and I've been walking that and running it for a while, I told her that there was a problem going through the tunnel because there were no lights and the women were concerned entering the tunnel. And I mentioned it to Debbie and within two weeks, they put lights in the tunnel. So, thank you Debbie and good luck.
And look, we know it wasn't just the women, many. Okay, okay, so we got Commissioner Dorner.
Yeah, I want to thank you for all your years of service. It's impressive how much history you have with the county and the Parks and Recreation Department, and most especially for your leadership in handing over the transition as well and helping out. That's been a big move and we're definitely appreciative for you staying on longer to help us out and make sure it's been smooth, so that way, everything was smooth on your time that you served here as well as on your way out and best of luck. We hope to see you around for years to come.
Thank you, thank you. Debbie, you are greatly appreciated. We are sorry the time won't permit today because Parks and Recreation asked for a half hour and, but we do want to hear from you, so this is your moment.
So, I want to say it's been a pleasure, it's been a great 35 years and, I mean, the commission is my family and always will be. I have so many great memories, I've just made so many great relationships with folks and it's the people, it's the caring people who have really kept me grounded throughout the years and just to have experienced and to be a part of all that's going on in Prince George's County. I mean, I am so blessed and thankful for that opportunity and I will look around as, in my retirement years and as I travel throughout the county and just smile and be thankful that I had a part in on that. And it's all because of everyone here, you all, who have made that possible for me. So, I'll be around, you can probably find me at SARC because it's less than five miles from my home, and I'm going to use that location to keep well, keep fit, and just have a good time in my leisure life. And of course, I'll have my grandsons with me most of the time, so I'm looking forward to another chapter.
And that's, that's grandsons plural now, right?
Yes, grandsons, Dylan and Javion. So, thank you all for a wonderful 35 years and trust me, we'll be seeing each other. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so can we focus on the commissioners and the DPR team that's on right now? Okay, Debbie?
All right.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we are, oh, I need a motion to approve the resolutions that I just ran. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion?
No approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
The ayes have it and let's just say that was unanimous. Okay. Way to go Debbie. Okay, so now we're going to go to the development review items on the agenda. I'm going to start, I have to start with these announcements, so for all of those who are joining us for the development review division, I mean, for the development review items. So, good morning, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board, and the planning board is now in session for Thursday, June 18th, 2020. In an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, this is the planning board's 13th, yes, 13th virtual meeting utilizing online phone and video capabilities. During these challenging and unprecedented times, the commission remains steadfastly committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, for our applicants, for our stakeholders, and of course, our staff while continuing business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone yet again of the participation guidelines for our hearings. As you can see from the screen, everything is posted on our website, speaker, speaker pre-registration and pre-submission of the comments and exhibits. All participants, again, must pre-register and all materials must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the planning board meetings as shown on the screen. We've been announcing this for over three months, so let's make sure everyone listens up. It's also on our website. Registered speakers and presenters connecting to a computer, a tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via email from the planning board office. Online participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. To listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, the participants, registered participants may dial the call-in number provided via the email. All participants must mute phones when not speaking. Please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in the room at one time. The public may continue to watch planning board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form and please see the screen for instructions or you can go to our website. We thank you and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. Okay, as always, we commence our meeting with a moment of silence for those who have passed in the intervening weeks since our last meeting of June 11th. In our commission family, we want to keep our own Vanessa Akins in our thoughts and prayers along with her family upon the loss of her father. Vanessa works in the community planning division of the planning department and we remember her on the loss of her dad. We also want to remember the commission retiree James Nitti Delaney, who joined the commission in 1974 and retired after 40 years of service with the Department of Parks and Recreation, mostly at maintenance and development at Randall Farm. We want to remember the growing victims of the widespread COVID-19 virus. In Prince George's County alone, there was over, it's now 18,106 confirmed cases and 628 deaths. These are real human beings, loved ones, people. We want to remember them and their families in our thoughts and prayers. In the legal community, I announced it last week, but it's Lorraine Ann Levann who is the mother of attorney Alyssa Levann. I did not have the name last week. Throughout the world, First Lieutenant Kenneth Cage Allen, U.S. Air Force pilot, whose plane crashed on Monday east of the United Kingdom. Oluwatoyen Salalu, age 19, who was the missing Black Lives Matter activist along with Victoria Sims, age 75, AARP volunteer, their bodies were discovered in Tallahassee. Robert L. Fuller, age 24, and Malcolm Harsh, age 38, both black men found hanging in Southern California. Jas Waters, age 39, columnist and Hollywood writer who worked on the TV shows This Is Us and Kidding. Denny O'Neal, 81, comic book writer who revitalized Batman and Green Arrow in the 70s. The Green Arrow was a socially conscious urban hero who dealt with issues such as racial injustice and drug abuse. Vicki Wood, age 101, trailblazing, record-setting NASCAR driver who broke gender barriers during the 1950s and 1960s. Harry Glickman, age 96, founder and former general manager of the National Basketball Association Portland Trail Blazers. Paul Rochester, 81, defensive tackle with the 1969 Super Bowl-winning New York Jets. Bobby Lewis, age 95, R&B singer known for his number one and hit, number one hit, Tossin' and Turnin'. I know some of you remember. Sushant Singh Rajput, age 34, Bollywood actor. Floyd Zager, age 94, renowned fruit greeter. Doctor Tomisaku Kawasaki, age 95, who was the Japanese pediatrician who was the first to identify inflammatory syndrome in children, which was later became known as Kawasaki Disease. Derek Campbell, age 53, gospel musician. Johnny Walker, let's get this right, age 85, 1970s and 80s wrestling champ known as Mr. Wrestling II. And then, hot off the presses, Jean Kennedy Smith, age 92, the last surviving sibling of President John F. Kennedy and Senators Robert F. Kennedy and Ted Kennedy, and she is the only one to survive to that great age. She was also the former ambassador to Ireland. Now, many of you may have also suffered losses in your family or in your circle and we extend our condolences to you as well. May we have that moment of silence, please? Thank you. Again, it's the month of June, it is Caribbean American Heritage Month. Many of us have that heritage. I, for one, have family from Barbados, my grandfather's from Barbados. It is LGBTQ Pride Month. And last year, last week, I made an announcement about the Still We webinar, which was amazing. But now, hot off the presses, because it is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, we honor and recognize the fight for LGBTQ civil rights and equality and how LGBTQ Americans have strengthened our county, our country, and our workforce. And in timely fashion, once again, we're overdue, but at least it's this month, the Supreme Court of the United States issued a landmark ruling on this past Monday that federal law, specifically Title VII prohibits discrimination against LGBTQ individuals in the workplace. About time. This ruling comes five years after the fundamental right for same-sex couples to marry. As a trailblazer, the commission has long demonstrated our support to the LGBTQ community and we were one of the first organizations in the region to provide domestic partner health benefits to our employees. We applaud the Supreme Court decision and celebrate Pride Month. It is also African-American Music Appreciation Month. Now, you know, there's many a song that touches your heart. It is the great, no, it is the Great Outdoors Month. We need for you people to get outdoors, but do so safely. It is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and it is Men's Health and Education Awareness Month. Men do not utilize, typically speaking, there are exceptions, but typically speaking and statistically speaking, men do not utilize and take advantage and look out for their health to the same extent that women do. So, we want to raise awareness about healthcare for men to encourage early detection. Men, on average, die five years earlier than women from three leading causes of death, heart disease, cancer, and unintended injuries. So, we want to urge men to take care of yourselves, to seek medical help, particularly in this COVID environment, because we are finding men deceased in their homes because they're reluctant to go to the hospital due to COVID and they sit home and die of a heart attack or a stroke or something. We do not want that to happen. We want all the men in our lives, all the men in our viewing audience to take care of ourselves. And in furtherance of that, Friday is Wear Blue Friday specifically to encourage men's health, and that is why if you look at our board members, we are all wearing blue today in support of the men's health, men's health. So, there we go. Everybody's wearing blue. Okay. It is also PTSD, post-traumatic stress syndrome, Awareness Month, and it is also Women's Golf Month. You heard Commissioner Washington and our departing Debbie Tyner talk about that as well. In, on this day, June 18th, 1928, Amelia Earhart became the first woman to fly across the Atlantic Ocean. 1941, the Brown Bomber, Joe Louis knocked out Billy Khan for the heavyweight boxing title. 1967, the first major U.S. appearances of Jimi Hendrix, Janis Joplin, The Who, and Otis Redding on the closing day of the Monterey International Pop Festival in California. 1968, the Supreme Court ban of racial discrimination in housing and sales rentals took effect. I would submit that we have a long way to go. 1981, Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart retired, creating the opening for the Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, the very first woman to serve on the Supreme Court of the United States. 1982, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 was extended by the Senate in 85 to 8 vote. 1983, the seventh shuttle mission challenger to launch Sally Ride as the first woman in space. 1986, the U.S. House of Representatives approved a bill to improve stricter sanctions on apartheid in South Africa. 1996 was the indictment of the Unabomber Ted Kaczynski. And 2001 was the premiere of The Fast and Furious, now up to, I think, seven or eight sequels at this point. We want to make sure that everyone completes their census. I mean, we were up to 63, I think, .2% as of now. So, we want to make, in Prince George's County, we're inching along, not fast enough. Urge everyone you know to complete their census forms. You can go to the website depicted on the screen or call 844-330-2020, 844-330-2020. Planning Department, we want to give kudos to the entire planning department plus the team for their wonderful presentation on the Bowie Mitchellville and Vicinity Master Plan. Oh my goodness, they did a fantastic job. They deserve huge kudos. It was on Saturday, June 13th, and we had hundreds upon hundreds who participated in that, who watched. We had council member, two council members and the mayor of the city of Bowie. I mean, just, it's just been amazing. So, we want to thank everyone. And there is a link to the video and the presentation slides, which can be found as depicted on the screen. You can go to pgplanning.org. Also, for the Department of Parks and Recreation, in response to Commissioner Dorner's questions, there are tremendous virtual summer clubhouses and programming for youth. Activities include STEAM, sports, arts, music, theaters, and more. Visit pgparks.com for more details. Finally, we approved a resolution to this today for Juneteenth. Juneteenth is celebrated on June 19th. It is a portmanteau, meaning of the month of June and the 19th, which is when the enslaved people in Galveston, Texas first learned that they had been freed two and a half years after the effective date of the Emancipation Proclamation. They, the owners of the enslaved people at the time determined that they would not share this with the enslaved people, and plus it had been illegal to teach them to read or write, so they didn't know. And these people continued to get free labor, free hard labor, and conduct all sorts of abuses at that time until the government sent troops down there to announce that they had in fact been freed two and a half years ago. And therefore, there was much jubilation and a huge festival on June 19th, and that festival continues, and it is a celebration, and it's the first celebration of that nature in the country. So, we want to, it's designated throughout the United States as the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery within this country. So, we adopted this resolution and we want to announce that tonight, there will be an I Can't Breathe panel discussion that starts at 6 o'clock. And so, and also, there will be tomorrow, there will be virtual events including cooking demonstrations, dance classes, because our in-person Juneteenth celebration has been canceled due to COVID. So, we wanted to announce that. I also want to take a moment to say, inform everybody that yesterday, the full commission of the Prince George's Planning Board and the Maryland National, and the Montgomery County Planning Board meets as the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission once a month. Yesterday, at our full commission meeting, the commissioners approved a resolution, it is called a Declaration of Solidarity with the National Movement to End Injustice and Violence Against African-Americans. It is a profound resolution that tells the story stating back to 1619 when the first Africans arrived in this country via the, by boat, by ship, to commence slavery of African-Americans in this country. And all the atrocities that happened since then, all the people who didn't make it in that slave trade, and then all the way down to the violence that we see today in terms of Trayvon Martin, most recently George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, so many more. And we, I'm so proud to say that the commission adopted this resolution. It has been endorsed by every single member of the Prince George's County Planning Board, every single member of the Montgomery County Planning Board. We are attaching our signatures there too, and it was signed by also every department head, our Department of Parks and Recreation Director, our Department of Planning Director, our, the Montgomery County Planning Director, the Montgomery County Parks Director, and our three officers, our General Counsel, our Secretary Treasurer, and our Executive Director. Director. That is how seriously we take this, and we will be posting this on our website. And I wanted to make sure that the world knows that we stand in solidarity with the movement, the national movement to end injustice and violence against African-Americans. Thank you for that. The Department of Parks and Recreation's Grab and Go program continues every five days a week, Monday through Friday, at three distribution sites. And finally, I want to close out with happy birthday to our Deputy General Counsel, the inimitable Ms. Deborah Borden. And I want to say, Happy Father's Day. We did that, Lee. Happy Father's Day to all the dads, papas, grandpas, uncles, dappas, anybody who has ever stepped up in a fatherly way. I know I'm looking at two dads right here amongst our commissioners and one grandpa. And, but all the guys, the men in our commission, whether you are a dad or not, we have programs. You step up for our cutie, and you step up to mentor. You do such a fantastic job. We want to wish Happy Father's Day to all the dads in the commission, all the dads who are participating in today's hearing, all the dads, or grandpas, or uncles, who are in our virtual audience, and all of you who've ever served in a dad-like role. We also want to remember those who recently, or any point, lost their dads. Honor them. And then, of course, the women who do double duty. So, we honor and celebrate you, too. So, we thank everyone and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. And we ask that we make every effort to stay safe, look out for one another, stay strong and resilient, stay woke, and remain ever hopeful as we strive to get through all of these things together. Thank you. With that, we have the Consent Agenda, items 4A through 4D. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, we approve of the items on the Consent Agenda.
Okay, so that we have a motion for Madam Vice Chair. We also, who seconded it?
Commissioner Washington.
Okay, Commissioner Washington seconded. We have Madam Vice Chair.
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you, unanimous. So, I'm going to then go on to item 11. We have the McGruder Park Resolution. And I, you know, I need a minute, though. Can we pause for one minute, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, census comes on. I'm looking for the people. You don't need to do item 11.
Okay. The Planning Board is back in session.
I'm going to do a roll call to make sure that we have everyone. Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
I'm present.
Commissioner Washington. Somebody's on the phone. We need to get them off, okay? Commissioner, I see Commissioner Geraldo.
Good morning again.
Good morning. Okay, Commissioner Dorner. Okay, so I know he's there. He'll be back. Commissioner Dorner? Oh, wait, 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 is that, is that my principal counsel? Am I looking at my principal counsel? We get to see you today. Okay, so he's our principal counsel, who's the lead attorney for the day. David Warner is present. Okay, and there's Commissioner Dorner. He's back. Okay, and so now, we have everyone there. We are joined in the hearing room. We have our Planning Director, Andre Green Checkley, and we have our technical hearing writer, she's waving, Lee Kratka, and we have Kenny Flanagan, who's working everything, who's working everything, all the PowerPoints, and we have Ryan Cron, who's doing all our tech stuff, so it's, but we're all here, operating at a safe distance. And with that, we're going to go back to item 11, which is the draft resolution for 2020-105 for Detailed Site Plan 18005 McGruder Point. We have Mr. Hurlbut here and Mr. Rivera. Only if there's any questions or comments. Mr. Rivera, you don't have any comment, do you? Or do you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so Mr. Rivera is present. Oh, for the African present. Mr. Hurlbut, you don't have anything to add, do you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Madam.
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Okay, Commissioner Washington? Commissioner Dorner?
I'm just going to, I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at the case last week.
All right, okay, thank you. Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay, so the motion carries 4-0-1. Please note the one abstention, because he wasn't present to hear the case. Okay. We're now going to go to item 8, which is the Brandywine Continuance. Okay, request, so let me make sure we have everyone we need. So, right now, we have a request for a continuance, and that's what we have on the table for today, due to the fact that the District Council has not convened, and there was an anticipation that they would have convened by this point to have considered the CDP. So, I'm going to do a check to make sure we have the persons present. Adam Bossi?
Present.
Okay, well, I don't know who's on here. Okay. Arthur Horn?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Glenn Burton?
Present.
Ben Ryan?
Present.
Okay. I'm going to go through this list. Which, is everyone unmuted? Everyone is unmuted. So, Jamila Balamani, if you're present, please indicate. Kelsey Randall?
I'm present.
Okay, good. Okay, wonderful. Kelsey Randall? Jennifer Jackson?
Present.
Valerie Davis? Tashara Burgess?
Present.
Angela Simmons?
Present.
James Smith?
Present.
Lasagna King? Okay, so what we have today, there are lots and lots of exhibits that have been submitted into the record, and some have called to inquire whether their exhibits are timely or not. All of those exhibits that got in prior to 10:00 AM were absolutely submitted timely. However, since this is a continuance request, and that the request is to continue this hearing until July of, July 23rd of 2020, those, if we go forward with that request, those items that were submitted after 10:00 AM will still be timely, and if you have other items to submit into the record prior to that date, they will still be timely, so long as they are into the record by 10:00 AM the day before the hearing, the Wednesday before the Planning Board hearing. I would suggest, some people wait to 9:58, you know, the day before. I would suggest trying to submit it earlier so that you don't have any technical problems, and there's no reason that it can't be submitted earlier. And all of those that have submitted, been submitted up to 10:00 AM thus far today are in the record. Okay, so, Mr. Bossi, would you like to address, or do you want to defer to the applicant to address the request for a continuance? Either one, Mr. Bossi.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just for the record, Adam Bossi with the Urban Design Section. I think you summarized any statement I would have made very well, so I will defer to Mr. Horn and mention that staff does support the continuance request to July 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horn?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. For the record, Arthur Horn, the losses of shipping horn in Largo, Maryland, on behalf of the applicant. Madam Chairman, you know, we were hoping that we would have had this hearing back in March, and we, this is the equivalent, as I explained, of the Planning Board making its decision, but the resolution not coming out.
Yes.
We've had the CBP before the District Council that has approved the CBP, but COVID-19 kicked in before the resolution, you know, said before that came out. So, we have delayed in the understanding, anticipation that the District Council would meet on certain days, which they have not done as of yet. They have initiated a bill that will allow them to meet virtually. We're hoping that they do so in time to at least have our resolution heard so that we can come back on July 23rd. We'll come back on July 23rd, and if it hasn't been, you know, heard by then, you know, then maybe we could talk to the staff about the possibility of.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Horn? Let me stop you right there, because I want to, I want to clarify for everyone, when we make a decision on a Planning Board case, as the decision, the final embodiment of that decision must be in a written resolution. And so, what the District Council has done is they heard the case and have made a decision, but they have not, or have not submitted their written decision. Is that, that's the posture in which we find ourselves today. And because COVID.
That's correct.
COVID was the intervention, and so that you don't have that written embodiment. And so, and that is what's necessary at this point. And I know you're saying in your letter, you had hoped, you know, it seems like each month you had hoped that they would have met, but it didn't work. So, now, with CB33 that they have introduced and that's under consideration, they may go to virtual hearings, and if that is approved, then hopefully you can get your case, you can get your decision, your written decision, and if not, you will be back asking for, we'll see what happens after that. But you will know something.
We'll see what happens.
You'll know, you'll know prior to that July 23rd, because the one thing I want to make sure happens is that we get notice out to the community, because you have many interested people here. We want to make sure that they are not caught off guard, and they have noticed. Okay, and then, okay, so now, let me turn to, was that, was that it for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if the board has any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner? I think he said no, okay. Okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I'm going to go to the signup list. Jamila Balamani, are you, are you okay, are you okay with the continuance to July 23rd?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Kelsey, oh, Kelsey, Kelsey Randall didn't answer. Kelsey Randall, are you present now? No. Okay, Jennifer Jackson, are you present still?
I'm present.
Okay, are, we, you're okay with July 23rd?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Valerie Davis, are you present?
Yeah.
Are you okay with July 23rd? Okay, thank you. Tashara Burgess?
Yes.
Thank you. Angela Simmons?
Yes.
Thank you. James Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Lasagna King?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. That concludes the signup list that I have for today. All of you have signed up your persons of record. Any documents that you have submitted, that you may have submitted, are included in the record. Anything that you submit up until the day before the actual hearing date will be included in the record. So, no one is late at this point. Is there a motion? Oh, Mr. Horn, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Madam, well, is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair. Commissioner Washington, approve of continuance request to July 23rd.
Thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it 5-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. Next, we have companion cases, Detailed Site Plan 19058 and Departure from Parking and Loading Standards 476 for Stuart Lane McDonald's. Let's do a check. Mr. Burke, are you on?
I'm present, Madam Chair.
Okay, so all of these cases, all of my cases seem to say Mr. Burke and Jeremy Hurlbut. Are you both on this? Yes, you're both on this, right? Okay. Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good morning, good morning, Chair. Ed Gibbs here.
Good morning. Crystal Saunders Hancock?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm here.
Ben Ryan?
Good morning, present.
Okay, and we also have two exhibits in the record. We have applicant's exhibit number one, which is the architectural rendering, and then applicant's exhibit number two, which is signage. Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Burke, you're on. Hold on, Mr. Burke, I think they're trying to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
I need you past him. Yeah, okay, we can hear you. Mr., okay, good, thank you.
Thank you again. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Board. For the record, I'm Thomas Burke with the Urban Design Section. The project before you is listed as items 5 and 6 on the agenda for Stuart Lane McDonald's, a Detailed Site Plan DSP 19058, and the departure from parking and loading standards DPLS 476 to reduce the number of parking spaces provided. The applicant is seeking approval of this Detailed Site Plan to develop this CSC-zoned property for in addition to the existing eating and drinking establishment and the second drive-through lane. Staff recommends that the board incorporate the records from both cases. Also, I would like to advise you of additional materials entered in the record, as you had mentioned, a letter dated June 16th from the applicant, and a plan perspective showing an additional customer entrance. The information was received and uploaded prior to the deadline.
Thank you.
Slide 2, please. The site is located in the southwest portion of Prince George's County, in Planning Area 81A and Council District 9. Slide 3, please. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of Stuart Lane and the east side of Woody Terrace. Slide 4, please. Site is bounded to the north and south by commercial uses in the CSC zone, to the east by Stuart Lane with the Clinton Park and Ride beyond, and west by Woody Terrace with commercial uses beyond. Slide 5, please. Site is also located within the military installation overlay and falls within the left runway conical surface area E, which establishes the maximum height of 200 feet and is well within the height limitations. Slide 6, please. Material photo illustrates the current conditions of the area, showing the existing building and surrounding uses, including Woodyard Road to the north, Route 5 to the east, and the Clinton, and the Clinton Park and Ride adjacent to the site. Access to the site is via entrances on both Woody Terrace and Stuart Lane. Slide 7, please. There are no regulated environmental features located on this property. The topography is relatively flat. Slide 8, please. The site has access from two local roads, which derive access from Master Plan arterial. Slide 9. This person, I view better illustrate.
Okay, I have to stop you. Your quality is not ideal. Is there any adjustment, your sound quality, is there any adjustment you can make?
I, I just, when I come to the workstation, is that better?
Say something else?
Hello?
Yes, that's better. That's so much better. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, next slide, slide 10, please. The applicant has two main proposals with this application. One is to add 679 square, to add 679 square feet to the existing McDonald's restaurant One is to add a 679 square, uh, to add 679 square feet to the existing McDonald's restaurant for additional dining area and to accommodate the expanded drive-through operation. The applicant's statement and justification indicates that although nearly 700 square feet is being added, the seating provided will actually decrease by 25 seats, or a total of 80 seats in the restaurant. The second request, uh, the second part of this request, rather, is to add the double drive-through shown on the right side of the building. This expanded drive-through will provide a split in the single access lane for parallel order boards, then merge back into a single lane for payment and pickup. This is a typical layout being installed in similar establishments everywhere to increase efficiency and reduce stacking. As part of this proposal, however, the existing parking spaces along the north side of the site are being converted into drive aisle. That's the, uh, right side shown on this, on this, uh, slide, resulting in the loss of spaces and the need for a departure. The applicant is seeking a departure from the parking and loading standards with 32 fewer spaces than the 73 required. Parking needs study was provided with this application, which concluded that the proposed parking will be sufficient for this site. Staff recommends approval of this request based on the findings on page seven of the staff report. Uh, this application is exempt from the requirements of the landscape manual because the proposal involves a total cumulative increase of less than 10% and less than 5,000 square feet with no change in use. Or the applicant is providing plantings on site, which can be seen as the darker tree symbols on this plan. Slide 11, please. And shown here in accumulation with the existing trees on this landscape rendering. Uh, slide 12, please. The proposed architectural elevations depict a more contemporary franchise look from the traditional natural brick and double mansard roof. This is a common upgrade for the McDonald's franchise and is similar to the architecture, uh, art, architecture seen recently on McDonald's restaurants in other parts of the county. The elevations show a more modern gray color scheme with panels in stucco, visual elements faced with aluminum simulated wood grain panels, and a straight parapet wall extending from the top of, top of the building. The building will feature flat metal canopies above the windows, uh, above the window line, across the front facade and on each side facade, and over each drive-through window. Next slide, please. A signage table was provided on the DSP, but it does not match the details provided on the plans and is not consistent with the regulations provided in the zoning ordinance. An evaluation of the signage provided and the sign criteria can be found on page six of the staff report with conditions to ensure performance with the zoning ordinance. Urban design staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP 19058 and DPLS 476 for reduction of 32 increases of the 33 spaces required for Stewart Lane McDonald's, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report dated June 12th, 2020. Uh, the applicant will discuss the additional materials in the record related to the, to adding a customer entrance on the front facade. Staff has reviewed, excuse me, staff has reviewed this additional customer entry to the structure and supports the change. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. A couple of things. One, as you indicated in the beginning, we are incorporating the record of one into the other, so that it's a combined record for both the, um, um, departure from parking and loading spaces and the detailed site plan. Um, also, I would, um, say that, uh, you know, when you, when the applicant asserted that the 41, um, parking spaces will be sufficient because of the market increase, um, in their drive-through service, I, you know, everybody has more drive-through service now during this COVID time, but I would point out that that is, the testing was done over, over time and also, um, it was done in September of last year, so it was pre, um, onset of, of COVID. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear. And then finally, I'm pointing out that, uh, obviously on condition B, B1E, as referenced in, um, the trail section on page 12, um, you have the, the replacing the existing bicycle racks with the two inverted U bicycle racks, because you know, you may get a comment on that, so, um, I just wanted to point that out. Let's see if there's any questions. Madam vice chair?
No questions, madam chair.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, madam chair.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions. I will defer to the U bicycle rack to Commissioner Dorn.
Okay. Commissioner Dorn?
I appreciate pointing that out. Um, I think we had talked about that in another case and that, that's the preference of how we, uh, we can go, go with the maximal kind of insertion of bikes, so I think it looks good.
Thank you. There you have it. Um, okay. So, um, without further ado, Mr. Gibbs, you're on.
Yes. Uh, good morning, Chair Hewlett, members of the planning board, Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Margot, uh, representing McDonald's Corporation on this case. Uh, yeah, I, I do want to thank, um, Mr. Burke for, um, his assistance in this case, um, and, uh, for also, uh, helping with the uploading of these documents at the last minute. Um, you know, this McDonald's, uh, has been in existence for quite a few years. Uh, this renovation is just part of the ongoing corporate, uh, effort to add the double drive-through and to update, uh, the facade of their buildings with a more contemporary look. So, um, I, I know you've seen these cases before, uh, come, come before the board and, and the architectures are of course similar, uh, as is the addition of the double drive-through. Uh, we, uh, support the recommendations of your staff as set forth in your staff report. Um, you know, we did have a traffic study prepared, uh, in September of 2019, as, uh, Chair Hewlett mentioned, and the maximum utilization of any space, uh, of, of, any number of spaces on site was 31 during one counting period of 15 minutes on Saturday, September 14th. Uh, the, the average was really down around 20, uh, on both days of, that the counts were taken. Uh, and you, you really can't overstate the impact that the drive-through has, um, on eating and drinking establishments with drive-through service. It just simply reduces the need for interior seating and that's why McDonald's is creating a larger dining area for more leisurely experience for those who, who choose to dine in with tables not placed so close. Um, but the seating is actually going down from 105 to 80. Uh, so we think we're going to have more than enough parking spaces and we appreciate the tech, the staff's support, um, for our departure. Uh, we, uh, accept all of the conditions. I would like to address, uh, condition B1D ever so briefly. Uh, we accept that condition. We recognize that there were some discrepancies between, uh, the chart on the front of the site plan package and then the, the signage that appears on the building, and so we certainly will, will clean that up. Um, there is, however, a suggestion that perhaps the signage does not conform to the zoning ordinance requirements and while we're going to resolve that with staff prior to certification, I did just want to place on the record the fact that in this instance, the allowable building signage is governed by, uh, section 27, 613, A, uh, B3B. Uh, and it provides that we are allowed two square feet of, of building signage for each one lineal foot of width along the front of the building, and that is measured either, uh, along the wall facing the front of the lot or the wall containing the principal entrance to the building, whichever is greater. And so if you look at our revised site plan, you will see that all of the parking on the north side of the building has been removed, uh, by virtue of adding the double drive-through. So all of our parking now, uh, is on the south side of the building and we have a door roughly, uh, in the middle of the building on that side. And, uh, as you can see from, from what staff has put up on the, um, on the visual, the parking that we have today is now on the south side of the building. So we suggest that the main entrance to the building is going to be on the non-drive-through side, the south side of the building. Our building, uh, length there is what we get to use, uh, and it's approximately 97.1 feet, uh, which, uh, when multiplied by the permissible two square feet per, per front of the building or side of the main entrance would yield 194.2 square feet of permissible sign area. Uh, we're proposing, uh, approximately 140 square feet of signage, uh, on the building. So we, we think we're well within what the code would authorize, but we recognize the, uh, uh, you know, the ambiguity which was generated by our site plan package and not that it was not clear, but just there were, uh, some conflicting notes on, on the first page and we apologize for that. So in any event, uh, with that having been said, I'd just like to, uh, note that a, an emergency, um, access door was added to the front or the east side of the building and that necessitated us adding the architect's rendering, uh, which Mr. Burke was kind enough to assist in uploading here yesterday morning. Uh, so thank you very much. We accept the staff, uh, recommendations, uh, in, in both cases and we would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Um, let's see if there's any questions for Mr. Gibbs at this time. Madam vice chair?
No questions.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Um, Commissioner Dorn?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, all right.
No questions? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Okay. Um, so Ms. Saunders Hancock, was there anything that you wanted to add or no?
Nothing for me, madam chair.
Mr. Burke, anything else for you?
No, madam chair, nothing else.
Is there, is there a motion?
Madam chair, Commissioner Washington, uh, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DPLS dash 476 and DSP dash 19058 along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay. The second was, uh, madam vice chair. Um, okay. Madam vice chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I, all right.
Commissioner Dorn?
I, good eyes.
Wonderful. Okay. The eyes have it five zero. We are next going to item seven, which is detailed site plan 87050-13, the shops at Oxford, phase two. Let's do a check. Okay. And Mr. Bishop?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Um, Mr. Tedesco?
Morning, madam chair, I'm present.
Good morning. Mr. Schneider? Wonderful. Mr. Burton?
Present.
Mr. Ryan?
Good morning, present.
Okay. Good morning. Um, Scott Shinsky?
Present.
Philip Hughes?
Uh, good morning and present.
Wonderful. So we have, um, everyone who signed up to speak is present. We have several exhibits. We have, um, applicant's exhibits, um, A, the proposed revised conditions, B, revised architecture, um, um, enlightening applicant's exhibit C, pedestrian circulation, um, applicant's exhibit D, photo array, and then applicant's exhibit E, which is the email correspondence from the Indian Head Highway Area Action Commission. And then staff exhibit, um, one and two, which is, um, detailed site plan, site photos, and then email correspondence with the, um, um, applicant. And so they are all, um, accepted and timely submitted into the record and identified as I just indicated. So with that, Mr. Bishop, you're on.
Thank you, madam chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam chair, members of the board, for the record, Andrew Bishop of the urban design section. Item seven is the DSP, which is proposing phase two of the shop, shops at Oxford and includes the construction of 8,247 square feet of commercial retail space, including a drive-through service. The applicant, as you indicated, has submitted additional information prior to the deadline and will be proposing revised conditions and is prepared to discuss the supporting exhibits that were also submitted with the application. Slide two, please. The site is in planning area 76B, counts the district A. Slide three, please. The property is in the, on the north side of Oxon Hill Road at its intersection with I-495. Next slide, please. The site is in the CSC zone and is located within the overall constellation center, which is outlined on this slide in green. The site is bounded to the north by I-495, south by Oxon Hill Road, east by the intercity, interchange of I-495 and west by commercial uses in the CSC zone. Slide five, please. The aerial shows the existing property, which is currently developed and is outlined on this slide in red. Slide six, please. The site is generally flat and does not contain any regulated environmental features. Slide seven, please. This slide shows the master plan, Royce Way, which impacts the property. These include the expressway of I-495 north and east of the site, shown in orange, and the arterial of Oxon Hill Road, which abuts the site on the south and is shown here on this slide in red. Slide eight, please. The subject amended proposes the development of commercial uses on parcels two, uh, on units two and five, which are outlined here in yellow. The site was the subject of recent applications DSP 87050-11 to convert the 10-story office building to a multifamily building and DSP 87050-12, which included phase one of the shops at Oxford for the construction of the two commercial buildings on unit seven that are recent, that have been recently constructed and these can be seen towards the bottom of this image. Slide nine, please. This exhibit shows the illustrious rendering of the site plan and shows the commercial buildings and improvements proposed with the application. Slide 10, please. This exhibit shows the detailed site plan submitted with the application, includes the development of a commercial, of the commercial buildings on site. Uh, the commercial building can be seen on units two to the east and the second commercial building can be seen on unit five to the west, adjacent to the north-south access road and was bound in performance with the zoning ordinance as conditioned. Slide 11, please. This exhibit shows the landscape plan submitted with the application and meets the requirements of the landscape manual. Slide one. The following architectural elevations were provided by the applicant and show the character of the proposed buildings, which are compatible with the buildings in phase one. This slide shows the commercial building proposed on unit five. Condition D of the technical staff report recommends additional architectural treatments on the east elevation of the building facing the access road. The applicant has submitted revised elevations shown in exhibit B in your backup and staff finds the revised elevations acceptable. Slide 13, please. These elevations provide illustrations of the commercial building with the drive-through on unit two. This slide shows the front elevation and main entrance as it would be seen from east west, the east-west access road. Slide 14, please. This slide shows the side and rear elevations of the commercial building on units two, um, and it's noted that similar materials were proposed on the front elevation that are repeated on the side and rear and have been found acceptable by staff. Slide 15, please. This exhibit was submitted by the applicant and shows the pedestrian circulation on site and has labeled the proposed primary circulation path in blue and the secondary circulation routes in green. Slide 16, please. Staff amended that exhibit to graphically illustrate the recommended improvements that are included in conditions 1H, 1I, 1J, and 1K of the staff report. The recommended sidewalk is shown in orange to the west of the commercial building on unit five, which staff believes is needed to provide direct connections to the interior uses on the site and would allow safe passage to these uses. Slide 17, please. This slide shows a key map created by staff showing the location of existing site photos that were taken on Wednesday, 6/17/2020, and illustrate the location and direction of the various images that are shown in these photographs. Slide 18, please. The final slide in this presentation shows the these-related photographs as illustrated on the key map from the previous slide. Images 1 and 2 show the location of staff's recommended sidewalk and show how the sidewalk could be accommodated between the existing trees, streetlights, and the roadway on the east side of the north-south access road. In addition, staff notes that the grass in these images is worn and is showing the path of pedestrian use on the site and illustrates the need for the sidewalk in this location. The other images on this slide are taken from different locations on the property, which staff feel require additional improvements or illustrate the existing conditions on the property. Brian Barnett-Woods and Ben Ryan are here from our transportation planning section today and are prepared to discuss these exhibits in detail or answer any questions related to the pedestrian improvements, if it is requested by the board. In conclusion, the Urban Design Section recommends the planning board adopt the specifics of this report and approve detailed site plan 87050-13, subject to the conditions found in the staff report. The applicant has proposed revised condition language, which was included in your backup and has been reviewed by staff. Staff is in agreement with the revised language with the exception of conditions 1H, 1I, 1J, and 1K related to the sidewalk and pedestrian improvements. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bishop? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Washington?
Yes, I just wanted him to clarify which conditions he was not in agreement with. I think he said HI, J, and K. Is that correct, Mr. Bishop?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. That was it for you? Okay. Commissioner Washington? Okay. Commissioner Dorner?
The slide that we're on right now, Slide 18, does that pertain to Condition H?
Yes, it does.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
What was the pushback that the staff received from the applicant?
I let the applicant speak to that. I don't want to speak for Mr. Tedesco. But the applicant has stated that there was insufficient room due to the existing landscape on site, the existing utilities, and an existing fire hydrant that was located within that area.
But was that what the staff found as well, or no?
That is not what the staff found, as Mr. Barnett or Mr. Ryan will discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
No further questions, Madam Chair.
I have one other question just real quick before we return over to Mr. Tedesco. So then, I think we already made a modification to some of the recommendations in the pedestrian paths. Is that right? Or is that, does Condition H reflect prior to the modification? Because I think the initial suggestion was some pedestrian path on the south side of the parcel, which I believe are different than this north-south access. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, this is Matthew Tedesco. May I be heard on Mr. Dorner's question?
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to, you get the opportunity to speak. Mr. Dorner, Commissioner Dorner, is your question directed at staff or is your question directed at Mr. Tedesco?
Yes, staff. I want to hear Mr. Tedesco and sort of the conflict later on. I was just trying to distinguish this, the north-south access that's right here, is that different from the earlier kind of discussion in the staff report about the secondary sidewalk on the south side access that we kind of acquiesced on? I think those are two different issues. I just want to be clear that they are. They are?
Yes, they are two different issues.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll wait for Mr. Tedesco then. Thank you.
Okay, so that's it for, okay, that's it for Mr. Bishop at this time. Mr. Tedesco, you're on, and if you would like to start with this or whatever point you would like to start with.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Matthew Tedesco is law firmer Mac Mihose on behalf of the applicant 6009 Oxon Hill Road LLC, represented here today by Mr. Scott Shinsky, who's on the line. Also with me is Mr. Philip Hughes with Rogers Consulting. I will address Commissioner Geraldo's question as well as Commissioner Dorner's question momentarily. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Bishop as well as all of staff, including trails and transportation. We have had a lot of interaction on this case, given its fairly simplicity of the case, but there has been a lot of interaction with respect to these sidewalks. You know, I'm happy to be presenting this case. These are the last two remaining undeveloped condo units within this condominium association. The Board will recall, back in 2017, October of 2017, we had a hearing with respect to the conversion of the old Constellation Office Building to Multifamily. That was the first high-rise office building conversion in the county. I'm happy to report that as of today, give or take, as I understand it, the current occupancy of that building is 87%. So I think we can all hopefully pat ourselves on the back as far as a job well done in converting that high-rise office building to multifamily and really setting the bar quite high for those conversions. I have since done one other one in Commissioner Dorner's neck of the woods, up in Hydesville with Metro, with the Metro 2 building, which is also fairly successful. So we want to commend the Board on its review and its creativeness with respect to that conversion. Most recently, the Board approved the retail component, which you've seen on one of the slides, the bird's eye view, which was 16,000 square feet of additional retail. That was on Unit Number 7, which is in front of the now converted office building, which we now refer to it as the Oxford. Those buildings exist. One building is partially tenanted. The building on your right, on the right side of the screen, is partially tenanted with other tenants coming in. Obviously, COVID-19 has had somewhat of an impact and delay on that, but we have additional tenants partially lined up for the other building. So this brings us to today with respect to Units 2, which is the smaller one to the right of the Oxford multifamily building, and then Unit 5, which is to the left and to the north of the Bank of America site and to the south of the daycare site, which are Units 6 and 4 respectively. As Mr. Bishop indicated, and I think it's in your backup, it was submitted, some of our email correspondences between Mr. Bishop and I, there's been a really concerted effort to try to bring this case to you without any issues. We wanted it to be very clean and simple, and I think for the most part it is. We have one, really one issue at hand, which is the north-south requested sidewalk along the front side of Unit 5. To Commissioner Geraldo's question with respect to why was there some pushback? Mr. Bishop hit on some of it, although not all of it, and it's in the email correspondences in your backup. We've tried to articulate that for staff to consider, and I want to thank staff for its consideration of that, and I certainly understand staff's position and certainly respect staff's position on adhering to their original recommendation for that north-south sidewalk along the frontage of Unit 5. Primarily, and this kind of leads into the other conditions and some of our revisions, that area is within a common element of the condo association. That common element is to the benefit of all the condo unit owners. The common elements include the sidewalks in the street, and I'm just reading from Section 3.3, and I'm sorry, I came across this this morning and didn't have any time for the upload. But 3.3 of the art of the declaration related to the condominium association says that no person other than the council, now the council is defined as the association itself, which is made up of the condominium owners. No person other than the council or its designated representatives may perform any construction, reconstruction, alteration, and/or maintenance of the common elements for which the sidewalk, this sidewalk would be included. No person shall, without first obtaining the council's written consent, do anything within the common elements, which will cause an increase in any premium paid by the council for any type of insurance carried with respect to this common element. Section 3.4 goes, deals with the common elements and how those elements are treated and says it shall be, the common elements shall be maintained and repaired by the association to the same extent it maintains and repairs all the other common elements. These, the north-south access, we call it access road, it's not a road. The east-west is not a road. It's actually a driveway. That was vetted quite clearly between the applicant and staff on Unit Number 7, because when we had the detailed site plan back in 2018, March of 2018, for Unit Number 7 detailed site plan for those two retail buildings that are now constructed, we actually had freestanding signs on the backs, near the driveway, it is off the common access, common element. And we had suggested to staff that we should be able to have those monument signs with advertising because it was a parallel road and the ordinance allowed for monument signs if the property was a parallel road, but it was articulated, and I think correctly articulated, that that is not a parallel road, that it is actually a driveway. And so if you look at just how the Constellation Center has developed, these two being the last two pads within the condominium association, all the pedestrian activity has been really directed internally to the site. If you go through our exhibit, I think it was Slide 15, if I'm not mistaken, which is our pedestrian circulation plan, you can see Exhibit C, thank you. Yes. Exhibit C. You could go back to that last, Exhibit C, C as in Charlie.
That's C.
It was also in your power, it was also in Mr. Bishop's PowerPoint, but C as in Charlie, thank you. It's duplicated. But you can see that those, the areas in blue are basically existing pedestrian connections. The green are the secondary, some of which are existings. The one on Unit 5 would be brand new. But all the pedestrian activity has really been focused and concentrated internally and away from, away from the driveways, with the exception of the east-west, and that was primarily done because of the office building going in. And obviously, now being multifamily, those sidewalks are appropriate. We believe, based upon the fact that there are no existing sidewalks along, adjacent to the north-south driveway, which leads to Oxon Hill Road, which is to the left of Unit 5, there are none to the north on the frontage of Unit 4, and there are none to the south on the frontage of Unit 6, which you've got multiple photographs in your backup, both taken by me on the 16th as well as by your staff yesterday, that show and depict no sidewalks, norther south. That being said, we did agree with staff in its request with respect to continuing that one sidewalk between Unit 5 and Unit 6, which is the Bank of America site. They wanted that staff had asked us to put a crosswalk along the drive aisle. If you see there at the bottom of Unit 5, there's a driveway in from Unit 6, right where the cursor is, yep, to your left, look to your left, right there, to do a crosswalk there and then extend the sidewalk out to the north-south drive. We agreed with that. We actually had a monument sign in that location. We agreed to remove that monument sign and do that sidewalk. The only caveat or request that we made with that, with that extension was to provide language that says that it's subject to the approval of the association for the reasons I just articulated in Article 3 of the condominium declaration. We have not yet vetted that with the association, and I don't want to be in a situation where we have to come back either before you or to staff to amend this detailed site plan for any reason, if for whatever reason the association is not in agreement, given the fact that it will incur additional costs for that sidewalk to be in the common element to be shared among the condo owners. That being said, as a developer of Unit 5, we understand the logic, as we understood, one of the requests was that there are parallel parking, there is parallel parking along that north-south driveway in front of the Unit 5, and so the request was it'd be nice to have a pedestrian connection for those, anybody parking there to get to the commercial building without having to walk through the landscaping and/or across the parking lot. So it made sense, and we did it. The request then was to, you know, continue the sidewalk north and south, which is shown in orange in the other slide that staff prepared. And again, it really doesn't serve any real function, in our opinion, given the fact that we can't, it can't be extended to the south. Unlike the frontage of Unit 5, which I think Mr. Bishop said the applicant's position was we didn't agree that it could fit. I would not take that position. It probably does fit. However, there is a, there is a fire hydrant that we would have to work around because relocating that fire hydrant becomes extremely expensive, and we would, if this condition is forced and the sidewalk is required, we would at a minimum ask for that sidewalk to be able to avoid that fire hydrant. However, to the south in front of Unit 6, there really is not sufficient room in the future for that sidewalk to continue. There is some grade, there's utilities, there are existing trees, and I will mention, if anybody's familiar with the sightings depicted in all your pictures, Mr. Geraldo, you may be, because I know this is close to your neck of the woods, there are very impressive, significant, mature street trees along this north-south driveway as well as the east-west driveway. We are intending to not impact those at all. We want to maintain those and continue to have those there. They are, they are very nice street trees. Those trees are much closer to that driveway in front of Unit 6, and it really inhibits the ability for the sidewalk to continue south. It also would be redundant because there is already the existing connection, as you see in blue, along the west side of the bank to get out to Oxon Hill Road. We think from a pedestrian standpoint, the circulation that you see on the screen now, even with the addition of the secondary access across our drive-off of Unit 5, which would facilitate pedestrians to access our commercials, that commercial side from those parallel parking spaces, is appropriate. And again, it keeps the pedestrian activity away from the driveways, which is really how it exists today. So it's, I would also mention that the added, the requested sidewalk, the north-south sidewalk, which is Condition H, will increase the limit of disturbance by 4%, which will then also increase the impervious area for this development by 5%. We, in an effort, and again, in the spirit of compromise and trying to avoid another hearing with some issues, we suggest, you talked to Mr. Bishop about perhaps, instead of the north-south sidewalk, again, we're good with the east-west sidewalk to the south of, between Unit 5 and 6, which is Condition I. Instead of Condition H, we propose wayfinding signage, which we can put up to really make sure that pedestrians are aware of where the internal circulation is and preferred, as well as to direct them to those existing three access points from Oxon Hill Road. And so we thought that that was a compromise worth pursuing.
Mr. Tedesco, let me make sure I'm with you.
Sure.
So I understand that you came up, you have your applicant's exhibit A that has proposed revised conditions. Are you further amending those or not?
No, I would submit on those, and what I'm referring to now, Madam Chair, is our revised language for Condition H, which was my attempt, the applicant's attempt, to try to, try to find a workable solution and compromise, given the reasons that I outlined for our concern with doing the sidewalk along the north-south driveway. I'm not going to repeat those, I articulated them. Um, I'm not going to repeat those, I, I articulated them.
Okay.
But i- if the board is compelled to, uh, follow staff's recommendation, which, you know, obviously we'll, we'll have to abide by, we understand that, but if the board is compelled to follow staff's recommendation and not adopt our suggested revision under H, which is, which would be wayfinding signage instead of the sidewalk itself north-south, at a minimum, we would like to see condition H revised to include the language, uh, subject to the condo association because otherwise, um, imposing that puts us automatically potentially in breach of the associate, of the, of the covenants, which I read to you sections 3.3 and 3.4 without the association's approval.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco, Mr. Tedesco, hold on a second, I'm only trying to follow, follow you so you can come back. So basically, we have staff recommendation in H, your alternative is in your applicant's exhibit A, which means provide, which reads, provide additional pedestrian wayfinding signage along the frontage of both north, uh, the north and south ax, the north-south access road and the east-west access road to identify pedestrian connections within the development. That's your preferred choice, but you're, so that's, but, but in the alternative, if, if the board is not satisfied with that, then you're asking that we go back to the staff's language and, and add at the end of it, subject to the conditions of, subject to the condo association.
That's correct, Madam Chair, thank you for summarizing that.
Okay, okay, alright, I'm just trying to follow, go ahead.
So, so, yeah, I, I think you said it best, I, I won't repeat it, but yes, that, that would be our request, um, uh, and I would just, I would conclude by noting, and again, totally respecting, um, staff and Trail's requested, uh, sidewalk, um, I would just note on page seven of the staff report under finding seven, C as in Charlie, uh, it says the DSP is in general performance with the applicable site design guidelines as referenced in 20, in section 27, 283, contained in section 27, 274, for example, vehicular pedestrian circulation is designed to be safe, efficient, and convenient for both pedestrians and drivers. So, that being said, Madam Chair, we would respectfully request, and again, um, your, the board's consideration of entertaining our revised conditions, hopefully supporting our revised conditions, uh, is primarily the condition H with, uh, wayfinding signage as opposed to the sidewalk. Uh, as you indicated and summarized, in lieu of that, if the board is not compelled, we would, we would certainly ask for the board's consideration, if the language is to remain as staff has recommended, to include language subject to condo association, because that has, that sidewalk has not been vetted and we must get that approval.
So subject to, subject to approval of the condo association?
Yes.
Okay, okay, alright, let's see if there's any questions of you and then, and then I will remind our team, that our, our board, that we have Glenn Burton on the line to, to address any, um, trans, Glenn Burton and, uh, uh, Mr. Ryan on the line to address any transportation questions. Um, and also we have Chuck Schneider. Now, um, so that, was that it for you? Did you want to put any of your, um, team on, um, Mr. Shinsky or Mr. Hughes, Mr. Tedesco?
No, Mr. Hughes just reminded me though that, uh, subject to the condo association and D-Pi, although it's not a D-Pi maintained right of way, I don't believe, we would have to get a permit from them to construct, um, nonetheless.
Okay, okay, so let's see, um, with the board, let me ask this, let's, before the, I ask if the board has any questions of you, perhaps we should see if, um, Mr. Bishop or Mr. Burton has responses to these, um, Mr. Tedesco's, uh, presentation today or, or his provoke, uh, proposed revised conditions.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, before staff does that, um, Mr. Tedesco addressed condition H and I, but has also proposed changes to J and K, so I wonder if he could just touch on those briefly and let staff, because those were also two conditions, two revisions to the conditions that staff did not agree with.
Right, and then K, K is a deletion altogether, yeah.
Yes, so let me, let me explain this and I, I thank you for prompting me to do that, Commissioner Washington. So, condition I is getting at Mr. Dorner's question before I set out, which is the, um, the, the extension of the sidewalk to this, between units five and six, um, which is the crosswalk, and so wha, all we did in I was similar to what I would ask in the alternative to H, which is just subject to the approval of the condo association, because that sidewalk would extend, and again, we have no objection to it, but it would, it will extend into the, portions of it will extend into the common elements, which, again, I need to get the approval of the association to do. So that's I. J is, uh, provide the standard cross, so the crosswalk, it might be helpful if you go to App, a staff's exhibit, which shows they requested additional sidewalks, I, I don't know, I think it may even slide 15 in the applicant's PowerPoint, uh, excuse me, in the staff's PowerPoint.
Okay, we're, we're trying to get to it, hold on.
Yeah. So, um, the purple to the south is, the, the purple and the orange running east-west to the set, between units five and six, uh, keep going, keep moving your cursor down, right there. That is condition I. And so what we've asked in I is just subject to the approval of the association, because you see it extends out to the common element. Again, we have no objection to doing that additional, uh, crosswalk and sidewalk subject to the condo, uh, approving it or allowing it. Uh, condition J, if you move up your screen to the purple, the other purple dash line, yes, right there, that's an additional crosswalk that staff has, has, um, uh, recommended, excuse me, uh, that's, that's condition K that staff has recommended, uh, to tie into staff's requested sidewalk running north and south, and so I've shown condition K deleted in the hopes that the board won't impose that sidewalk, and if they don't impose it, then that sidewalk becomes unnecessary, or excuse me, that crosswalk becomes unnecessary because it doesn't tie into anything. So, so that's the reason for K being deleted. Um, J is the crosswalk, the purple crosswalk to the south, and again, uh, we just added the language, if the sidewalk extended in accordance with I-1, meaning if the association allows us to put that southern sidewalk in the common element, then obviously we would strike the crosswalk across our drive aisle to accommodate that. So, I've, uh, in an effort to try to put all these things together so they work, uh, that's the reason for the revisions to, uh, H, I, J, and K.
Um, does that answer your question, Commissioner Washington?
It does, and thank you.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Bishop, um, are, are you prepared to, to address this or do you want us to go straight to Mr. Burton?
Um, I'd like to, um, to call on, uh, I think Mr. Ryan is the Trails reviewer on the case.
Okay, okay, um, okay, Mr. Ryan?
Hi, this is Benjamin Ryan, Transportation Planning Section. Um, in regards to, um, the revised conditions, we, we are okay with conditions I and J, that the extension of the sidewalk between unit five and six and the subsequent, subsequent crosswalk across the unit five entrance, that those are subject to the condo approval and D-Pi approval.
So, hold on a second, hold on a second, let me make sure, um, okay, so J has more than that, J is, um, is, is in condition with one I, so are you, are you saying you're okay with conditions I and J in the applicant's exhibit A?
Yes, with, with written correspondence from D-Pi.
Okay, 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 so now that brings us to H and K.
Yes, so we, we would agree to the sidewalks, um, also subject to modification and approval by the condo association and with written correspondence by D-Pi.
Okay, so, so you're saying you're okay with his option, basically three, not staff's original option, not his wayfinding option, but with staff exhibit, um, with, with the staff condition supplemented by that additional, um, language that Mr. Tedesco proposed, that's what you're, that's the one you're okay with?
That's correct. We, we did think in this case that, you know, maintaining the sidewalk on the west side of unit five north-south, um, and then the subsequent, the crosswalk, um, north of unit five, that these were necessary pedestrian improvements.
Okay, so you're, you're, his proposed, his proposed, original proposed H in, in applicant's exhibit A, did, in terms of the wayfinding signage, was not real, a viable solution in your opinion?
No, we, we absolutely appreciate, you know, the, the, the gesture and we would work to find a solution. We did not think pedestrian wayfinding signage at this location would be particularly useful. Um, and we, we would stand by the request for the north-south sidewalk.
So sub, and now we are adding subject to, to approval of the, um, condo association and written correspondence from D-Pi, and if we get, if, uh, neither of those or only one of those, then that condition goes out the window?
Yes.
And, and then you don't have the wayfinding either? Okay, alright, and so we're okay with that, okay. That's all I want to make sure of, and then tell me, tell us about K? Okay, or you've just done that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So since we would want the conditions subject to approval by the condo association and D-Pi with written correspondence.
Written, wait a minute, hold on, written approval from D-Pi, you're saying, okay, eh, okay, alright, was that Mr., was that you, Mr. Tedesco?
Yeah, I just wanted, just for the record, again, you know, our, our, obviously our preference would be for the revisions as we provided in applicant's exhibit A, however, you know, if the board's discretion is to, eh, eh, follow staff's recommendation, I just wanted to thank, um, staff in its comments with respect to supporting of the additional language. Um, probably not the most ideal scenario for us, but it's, um, certainly puts me in the frame of not violating the law and not having to come back and revise this, uh, with you all in the future for whatever reason. So I just wanted to thank staff for its consideration of that added language as an alternative, if the board's not inclined to go our way.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, okay, was, was that it for you, Mr. Ryan?
Madam Chair, I, I did not hear, uh, Mr. Ryan address, um, um, applicant proposed change to K.
I thi, I think he did, okay, alright, Mr., okay, Mr. Ryan?
We, we would, we would hold firm on requesting condition K. Um, again, subject to approval by-
With that language, that language, I think that's what he said, to keep the same language, add that language to it for K.
Yeah.
Subject to-
Essentially, I think for all of them, H, R, J, and K.
Correct.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Subject to the approval of the condo association and written, um, approval from D-Pi, okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, so did, let me find out if, while I have you right there, Commissioner Washington, do you have any questions of Mr. Ryan or Mr. Tedesco?
I, I do not at this time, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair?
Uh, no, thank you.
Commissioner Dorner?
Yeah, dear, um, so, I think I've, I'm, I'm leaning with staff on the sidewalks. The, my, my question about, um, for Mr. Tedesco would be, why, why would the association incur any costs, and, and I have such preference of that, um, thank you for, for continuing to go through with, um, the development of this area, I'm, I'm excited to see the conversion from office space to condos being so successful, that's, that's awesome, and, and I hope that the, uh, Metro Two building is just as successful. Um, I, I was just kind of confused though, why the condo association's boundaries, um, lie that far out, so why they would incur any costs from this? Um, and then I also have a, a question for Mr. Warner, um, later on in terms of, um, maybe I should pay more attention to, to the sort of clauses at the ends of these, um, but do we often put subject to approval of the condo association? Because I don't want us to get into the habit of getting usurped with our police powers, um, by other associations, because then any association could come in, a bid or condo association or an HOA, impose some kind of conditions and prevent us from any sort of regulatory power which reverts the, the role here, and, and I don't want that to be, and I'm not suggesting Mr. Tedesco is using this as a scapegoat, but that absolutely should not become the, the, the sort of pathport that we use these associations as scapegoats or as, um, setting the authority over, over what we can do. So I'm not accusing Mr. Tedesco of doing that, but I'm kind of wondering whether or not that's okay from a legal standpoint and, um, from Mr. Warner and then from Mr. Tedesco, just kind of understanding, um, why there's a perception that there might be additional costs here.
So, um, thank you, Commissioner Dorner, again, for the record, Matthew, so, so the uniqueness of this particular development, um, which is unique, it's not customarily, um, done, although it, it occurs, but the uniqueness of this one in particular is that this one is governed by the condominium, condominium article of the code because it was recorded as a condominium plat. These are not publicly dedicated rights of way maintained and operated by the county. Um, both these, uh, these, the east-west and the north-south drive, driveways are common elements described within that, uh, declaration and pursuant to the, the law that exists under the condominium regime for which this is created. Um, so, so as far as the why does it go out that far, it goes out that far because the entire property inclusive of the Home Depot, the PetSmart, the daycare, the bank, the original Constellation Building and then these remaining pads, it includes this common element, which is the east-west and then a portion of the north-south. That is shown on the plat, um, that is what's controlled. The association is bound by the covenants that exist for this condominium regime, which give voting rights, um, and other rights to all the individual owners of these particular units. There's eight unit condominium units, uh, for the entire property, and so each of them have a different percentage ownership interest, and they all benefit from these common elements. And under the declaration, they all have obligations and responsibilities for, uh, the common elements and, and some of the limited com, common elements. The limited common element includes the parking garage, which is limited to the, to the multifamily and then the stormwater pond, and so they all share in the, the maintenance, the insurance, the liability, et cetera, of that. So, uh, my request for that additional language is, is not to get out of anything, I mean, we are reading the tea leaves and we understand, but because I'm bound by these covenants which, uh, police, so to speak, this particular development for these particular common elements and staff is requesting improvements within those common elements that I don't, my client doesn't own exclusively, um, I need to also ensure that I don't run into a situation that I can't comply with your provision because these, because it's in violation or, or contradiction of the condominium regime and the covenants, uh, and then I'm stuck and I can't move forward. So, i- it's, it's really there to provide insurance and flexibility so that I can adhere to, you know, not only your laws, but their, but the laws that exist on the property today.
Okay, yeah, I think that makes more sense of the, of the property not being subdivided and it's almost like a pod just sort of sitting there, uh, in some ways. Um, but I, I would like to still hear from Mr. Warner, so I, I appreciate your comment on not wanting to violate their covenants, um, and, and since this is not private roads and it's, um, the common elements within there, I still want to hear from, from our own legal counsel and, and maybe we can save it for the very end, about whether or not that, the clause, the reference, the subject to the approval of the condo association should be in there, because while, while I don't want to cause you headaches and, and mess up your case, I also don't want to throw away our own powers, um, that we're, we're bowing down to, to this other sort of regulatory authority that does not usurp us in any kind of sense.
Okay, um, so let, let me, let me, uh, well, let's give Mr. Warner a chance to, um, to, to, let's give him a little bit of time, and then let me see if we can go to, um, Commissioner Geraldo, um, first.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dorner raised essentially the same issues I had, I don't, I really want to hear from, from, uh, from our counsel, because I don't see how the applicant would be in violation of any covenant, or any of the condominium covenants, if we are requiring them to do an act. And so perhaps, uh, Mr. Warner can address that.
Okay, well, I was trying to give him time, so I was trying to see if you had any questions of anyone else? That was my question to you.
No.
Okay.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm towards having the sidewalks as well, I'm familiar, very familiar with the area, and I think what they're trying to do is, is make, and they've done a good job, uh, and it, it's a mixed use, and I think sidewalks only help the flow of people going from one shopping area to another and- and in that entire vicinity. And probably even become more with the continued development of the National Harbor and MGM.
Okay, okay, so no one has any other questions? Mr. Warner, then, in that case, are you ready?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chairman, David Warner, Principal Counsel. So the difference comes down to a couple things. One, Mr. Dorner, if this was a brand-new development, for instance, we would very easily identify places where sidewalks should be, and we would require that they be maintained through covenants and HOA or condominium by the association. Brand-new development, no problem. So we're not at all restricted in that case. This is a little different because now we have a development going in on an area that already has an established condominium association. So the developer is pointing out that in order to install the improvements that we're requiring, he needs to get the approval of the condominium association. And I think that is, because they did not give me a copy of the association bylaws and, you know, whatever governs that property, I don't know for sure. But it's certainly very reasonable that would be the case because absolutely, when you put an improvement in like this, that is one more sidewalk that is to be maintained by the condominium association. So that would be a liability that the association would want to control. Now, that doesn't mean, however, that your requirement couldn't say that they have to put it in and they have to get approval from the condominium association. So, for instance, if this property had no other access point except across the condominium association property to get to it, we wouldn't say, "Well, get the access if you can, but if you can, no problem." In this case, however, you have a sidewalk. So if they can't get the approval of the condominium association, if you don't include that condition in there, then you're making the decision that this development can't go forward. So that's a little bit different when you're talking about a sidewalk than something that would literally prevent it from being developed if you didn't get the approval. So that's the difference. Does that answer your question?
No. Mr. Warner, can you say that last part again? So if they, I'm just trying to be clear on that last part. So if they don't get the approval of the homeowners' association, the condo association, then it's, then the condition does not go forward, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And-
You could also add some additional language in there. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Okay, my question was, so if that doesn't go forward, maybe this is where you were headed to it. So if the condo association didn't agree with it, we have now, we did not accept Mr. Tedesco's alternative language, so it could, and that wouldn't have been better than no condition. I guess what I'm hearing from our staff, that that wouldn't help, that's not better than not having the sidewalks? The wayfinding, so if for some reason the condo association didn't approve, then the condition does not go forward, and the substitute condition would not have made the situation any better?
Right, now, I would think that the wayfinding signage would be a good fallback if the condominium association were to deny it.
Yeah, I had asked that question earlier, but nobody seemed to like that, so, okay.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Warner, please?
So the applicant proposed wayfinding signage as a substitute for building sidewalk. But the discussions in here suggested that we didn't like that alternative. So now it's either install the sidewalk subject to approval of the condominium association, require the sidewalk, no matter what, or don't build the sidewalk. Those are the three options.
So, but here's the thing, so Commissioner Geraldo, what I was saying before, is if for some reason we don't get the approval of the condo association, then the condition does not go forward. And what I had asked earlier in the presentation was, is his fallback position regarding the wayfinding, is that an option at all? And they, what I heard from staff is they'd rather go forward with approval of the condo association, knowing that there's a possibility the association may not approve it, in which case you get no, that that condition does not go forward. And the, and the proposed revision, the proposed revised condition would not be a better alternative. It's not even, I just wanted to know if that was a better fallback position than having no condition? And the answer seemed to be no. So, so there is a chance, we can go forward with the condition, with the language, subject to approval of the condo association and D-PY, understanding that we may or may not get it? So the condition may go forward or it may not?
So if it doesn't go forward, I'm a little confused, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. So if the condition does not go forward, in other words, if the condominium association does not approve, is there a default?
That's what I think Mr. Warner was getting at, and that's what I asked before. I think that's what he was getting at. And we can say, you know, if you don't get the approval, we can go back to the applicant's revised condition as a default, but okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I don't know who I'm talking, oh, that's Brian Barnett Woods? Okay.
Hi, good evening, this is, for the record, this is Brian Barnett Woods, Transportation Planning, with the Planning Department. So I think we, a solution may be to have the condition kind of in two parts. The first being, we are recommending this sidewalk subject to approval and modification by the condo association and D-PY with written correspondence. If the sidewalk isn't going to be put in, then we can fall back to the wayfinding signage. However, I am very wary of using wayfinding signage because its effectiveness isn't really all that great. Wayfinding signage tends to kind of reflect forcing pedestrians to use certain routes, which is really more analogous for how we design for automobiles. And putting in a sidewalk here is more emblematic of really taking pedestrian behavior into account and then recommending facilities that are going to anticipate and accommodate the needs of those people walking. So yeah, sign will point to where that sidewalk is, but as we see now, people are walking through the grass anyway because it's probably the shortest way to get from A to B, so I don't know how effective the sign would be.
Okay.
That being said, it may be better than nothing for ADA access. So maybe a compromise can be adding the signage if the sidewalk can't be built with the written correspondence.
Okay, so let me make sure I heard that correctly. So I, that was the question I had asked earlier, and that's the response I thought I heard earlier, that that wayfinding thing was just not helpful. But it may be helpful for ADA accessibility is what I hear you saying now. And so the preferred language is still the language, as Mr. Tedesco indicated earlier, with adding subject to approval of the condo, written approval by the condo association and D-PY. Okay, and however, in the event we don't get, in the event such said approval is not received, we'll incorporate his language. Is that, and we'll go with the wayfinding? That's what you're saying, Mr. Barnett Woods?
Yeah, I think that could work.
I mean, we'll word, if that's the case, it can be worded more professionally, you know, than I just stated it, but, okay. Let's, okay, so that seems to answer that question. Let's see, Mr. Tedesco, you're okay with that? Is that your first choice, but?
I think you summarized it well. Appreciate Mr. Barnett Woods's comments. And not our first choice, but certainly better than the existing conditions. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, okay, so.
Commissioner Geraldo, I just have a suggestion. In the future, if this comes up, if the applicant could submit the condominium document, so that could be verified by our council. Obviously, in this case, it's too late, but if these situations come up again, and the applicant is going to rely on something such as they did today, then we should have, we should have that as part of the package.
He did apologize, he said he just got it today, too, but that's true, okay.
And I would say, and I will echo that, of course, Mr. Geraldo, Commissioner Geraldo, I absolutely will. I will say, in 15 years, this is the first time I've had this issue on a condominium, so I don't foresee it coming up again, but duly noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Why wasn't the condo association consulted beforehand? Did it just come up like two days ago? Or why are we waiting until the case day to throw away some of our regulatory authority because we might have an issue with the condo association? Like, I understand, Mr. Tedesco, the sticky situation you're in, and I don't want to tank the whole development case because of this, but I don't like opening up slippery slopes and potentially allowing instances where we could see strategic kind of gaming of condo associations or other authorities having some kind of a decision authority or approval of things that we obviously need. I mean, people, like Mr. Barnett Woods pointed out, people are walking on this path. There's a reason why they're suggesting a sidewalk here because that is the use, and the wayfinding device is just, I know that's your sort of attempt to try and get to a compromise, but you can't, they're already walking there already. So why wasn't the condo association consulting beforehand? Or why aren't they here today?
Well, the condo association is made up of all eight unit owners, one being the PetSmart, Home Depot, Bank of America, which are national corporations. The condition itself, staff have, we had worked with staff because they had originally discussed doing a sidewalk on the northeast side, which was the focus of our attention. When we got the staff report, I downloaded, personally downloaded the staff report last Friday. It was not, not that it needs to be, and it's not an excuse, but it was downloaded by me last Friday. We started working with Mr. Bishop as early as Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday, we had to upload everything on Wednesday, and here we are Thursday. So it's just, just the nature of who these unit owners are and their corporate structures, it's just not something that we're able to do in ahead of time. And honestly, I was kind of hopeful that we will be able to negotiate and resolve this without this being an issue before the board here today. We were not ultimately successful at doing that as of 9:55 yesterday morning. So it's just, it's just the timing of it.
And they not have like, sorry, I mean, I think that's just a poor selection of using the condo association as the legal instrument to having these units together.
Mr. Warner, again, I don't want to take issue with that, but I'm going to take issue with it because it implies something that's just factually not true. I'm simply just trying to provide flexibility so that we understand the board's desires to have the sidewalk. What I, all I'm suggesting is that I just need to have the ability, if the condo association says no, that I'm not then unable to satisfy the condition, and then have to come back before you and have this argument all over again.
I understand that, but you could have had a property manager from the condo association or some sort of a contact person, even if you don't have a vote, you could have somebody else here from the condo association to make some sort of a, the webinar they think it's possible that this would gain approval. They were here, and they said, "Yeah, this isn't a big deal, it doesn't really affect the other parcels, it'll make it nicer development." Then I think that would be a lot easier to make this kind of a decision. Because right now, I'm actually leaning towards not actually including the reference to the condo association. And I don't mind about D-PY, but I just don't like the ability of giving away our regulatory authority and starting that kind of an instance.
Okay. Let me see if the board, any board member has any other questions. Mr. Tedesco, you get the last comments. Okay, do any of the board members have any other questions? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner, was that it for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Bishop, do you have anything else?
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tedesco, the floor is yours.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you so very much. Again, I just want to thank Mr. Warner for his comments, his opinions provided in response to the questions, Mr. Barnett Woods for his comments, as well as Mr. Ryan, and again, thanking Mr. Bishop for his review and his assistance in this case. We would obviously respectfully request the board's consideration and motion in support of our Exhibit A. However, in the alternative, we would request the revisions to Condition H as articulated during this discussion. With that, Madam Chair, respectfully request the approval, your vote and approval of this detailed site plan. Thank you.
Okay, but, okay. So there are no other questions, I guess, of Mr. Tedesco at this time, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, it's Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-8750-13 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and revised and amended as follows. Condition 1D, as amended in applicant Exhibit Number A. Condition 1F, as amended in applicant Exhibit Number A. Condition 1H shall read as follows. Provide a standard five-foot sidewalk along the north-south access road fronting Unit 5 along the entire width of the parcel, comma, subject to written approval from condo association and D-PY, period. And whether this needs to be broken into a separate condition, I'll defer to staff. But if period, then if said approvals are not obtained, provide additional pedestrian wayfinding signage along the frontage of both the north-south access road and the east-west access road to identify pedestrian connections within the development. Condition 1I shall be amended, it shall read as outlined in staff's report, but at the end there shall be augmented language which states, subject to written approval from condo association and D-PY. Condition 1J shall be as outlined in staff's report, but shall also be amended to include the language, subject to written approval from condo association and D-PY. And Condition 1K shall be as outlined in staff's report and further amended to add language that reads, subject to written approval from condo association and D-PY.
Okay, we have a motion.
A point of clarification from the motion maker. In applicant Exhibit A, 1C had a revision that I don't think was mentioned. Are you accepting the insertion of for condo units in?
Thank you, Commissioner Dorner, yes, accepting 1C. Thank you for that.
Okay, so we had a motion by Commissioner Washington. Who seconded it?
I did second, yes.
And that includes-
I have a question.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, wait. The second, does that, that includes with the new Condition C that Mr. Dorner, Commissioner Dorner just pointed out, too, right?
It does.
Okay, thank you, okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
Yeah, the question I have is, I recall staff saying written approval of D-PY. I was, I don't recall them saying it has to be written approval. I mean, it's going to be subject to approval of the condominium association, but I don't remember staff saying written approval of the condominium association. So can I get clarification on that?
Well, how would you, how would you get the, how would you get the approval?
I'm seeing written approval from condo association and D-PY.
Right, how else would you know? It's either going to be in a resolution or minutes or something, that's some kind of written approval. It's got, you gotta have something.
Okay.
I would think, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Geraldo, this is Brian Barnett Woods at the Transportation Planning Department. Commissioner Geraldo, to answer your question. We really like having the written approval because it helps at the time of building permits. If the plants have been modified in some way, they can include that written correspondence in their permit package, and it helps speed up that review process as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, so with that clarification, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion, any additional discussion?
I just asked the motion maker if she would potentially amend the sort of conditional statements at the end statements at the end of a few of the conditions, that instead of saying, subject to the approval of the condo association, or the written approval of the condo association and DEPI, have it saying, subject to the lack of disapproval of the condo association, lack of written disapproval by the condo association, and written approval of DEPI. And I ask that, because if this really is that difficult to get these national people together to vote on this condo association, who knows how long it'll take for them to actually approve this? So as long as they don't have any disapproval to this in some way, then that would still allow that condition to go forward.
So it's a presumption of approval?
Appreciate the well-intentioned thought, but I don't think that that gets to the heart or spirit of what needs to happen. Because not having an approval just essentially allows nothing to occur in perpetuity. Subject to approval at least suggests, in my opinion, that there is some action that needs to take place in order to gain the approval.
Yeah. I just don't know if the covenant bylaws will allow them to write an actual approval to that, because we haven't seen those. And at least my own HOA, we won't write an approval of certain things. Like, if I had a neighbor who wanted to add on something on the top of their roof, and the HOA would not actually write an approval for that, because it would be potentially in violation of some obscure thing that they were worried about. But they said that we will not pursue you on that.
Right. But generally, those items, I mean, just from the homeowner's perspective, are covered as part of the minutes, you know, in a board meeting. So that could be written approval.
They wouldn't actually provide written approval. And I'm just worried that this might actually... The lack of an objection might actually be okay for them to continue to build this sidewalk and not get kind of stuck.
Again, I appreciate the distinction you're making, but I think homeowner is quite different than corporate HOA entities. And most corporations will not operate the way a homeowners' association will, because they just... They don't, quite frankly, I think, have the flexibility purely from a liability standpoint. And maybe council can weigh in on that.
Unless we put a time period on it, you know, for them to respond. Mr. Warner?
No. I agree with Commissioner Washington. And I think for the applicant's sake, they're not going to pursue anything there if they don't have a written approval from their condominium association. That just exposes them to liability, just like it would that homeowner.
Commissioner Dorner? Any follow-up?
No. I mean, I think that's fine. I just hope that we actually do seek the actual approval, because we very well could just not even seek it, and then they don't have to build the sidewalk.
That's right.
Chair, I do have a suggestion, if it would help. What I have seen in the past is you recommend that the applicant may take reasonable measures to secure condominium approval.
I agree with that. That's what I was looking for.
Good faith. Good faith. You can say good faith.
We think that's...
But let's see. I don't know if the motion maker accepts it. Okay.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I would agree with that. Somehow putting a timeline or timeframe associated with it.
Thank you. Yes.
So...
And the second agrees.
So would you be... Let me go back to the motion maker. So are you saying, make good faith efforts to secure approval and from DEPI, from the condo association and DEPI? If no approval is obtained... And then in the second one, if no approval is obtained within whatever timeframe, whatever however... Whatever the designated timeframe is, then what? Then we go to B?
I don't think... I agree with the first part of what you said, but I don't know that we can put a timeframe on if it's not.
Right.
Okay.
You know, and I think, look, the comments made earlier, you know, for whatever reasons, we didn't have the condominium documents before us. There was no, you know, outreach or conversation with the HOA, with the corporate HOAs, if you will, because that would certainly, I think, inform a lot more, not only this conversation, but ultimately our decision. You know, but if the covenant and the documents states that they... And there would be liability for them. And I mean, there would be cost associated with maintaining them. So...
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Barnett Woods?
Yes. Thank you. So we sometimes have similar conditions that we've had in other cases, where instead of the board, it's DEPI. And the language doesn't include the words approval. It says, you know, we require you to put in this sidewalk, comma, unless modified by the Department of Persecution and Enforcement with written correspondence. So maybe in this case, we could do the same thing, where we don't include the term approval, but it can be, unless modified by the condo association or DEPI with written correspondence. And then that way, the plans have the sidewalk, and then if they opt against building the sidewalk, all they have to do is show that written correspondence, the sidewalk has been taken out of the plan.
From where I stand, that's much better. And I was trying to remember the language we typically use, and that is the language we typically use. Okay. Let's go back to the motion maker. Commissioner...
I absolutely agree. And thank you, Mr. Barnett, for pointing that out. It's much cleaner, and I think gets to the spirit and essence of what it is we're trying to do. At least, I'm trying to communicate as part of the motion, so...
Okay. Let's get through the second.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? So now you are amending your motion to include that language as suggested by Mr. Barnett Woods. Okay. Is there any additional discussion? All in...
Thank you for my clarification. I think that was really helpful, and that got me over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. If there's no additional discussion, Madam Vice Chair, what is your vote?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Dorner? The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you. Okay. So, and happy Father's Day to Mr. Tedesco. I meant to tell Mr... I meant to tell Mr. Gibbs as well. Okay. So now we're going to... I know people are hungry, and I'm one of them, but we have one last case. And I'm channeling James Crown. We're going to hit this and quit. Okay.
Madam Chair, do we do Item 10, the draft resolution? I don't recall.
Item 10 is for Item 9.
Got it. Okay. Sorry about that. That's right. That's right.
Okay. So I want to get to Item 9, and that's it. Okay. All right. So I'm going to do a check, make sure we have everyone we need. Let me check with our board first to see if anyone needs an extremely short break.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You do? That's a yes? Okay. We're going to take... We're taking...
Two minutes.
Yeah. Five minutes. Okay. Five minutes. That's it. Okay. And then we're coming back. Okay. So Mr. Burke, are you on?
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera, you're on. I see you, for the record. Okay. Mark Juba?
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm here.
Wonderful. Glenn Burton?
I'm here.
Noel Smith?
Present.
Jennifer Stabler?
Present.
Paul Sun? Okay. Parks and Recreation, we had Paul Sun signed on, but, okay. I think we're okay there. Sean Bruce?
He's here.
Okay. Daniel Schlegel?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay. That concluded my sign-up list. So we had no other speakers, no exhibits on this case. So therefore, and this is the last case which we elected to take before lunch. I know you all hear me. Okay. So, Mr. Burke, you can start off, then followed by Mr. Rivera. We'll see if we have any questions. I know off the top, I have one. So, Mr. Burke, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be as expeditious as the law will allow.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Thomas Burke with the Urban Design Section. The project before you is listed as Item 9 on today's agenda. Detailed site plan DSP-19007 for Fairway Estates at Glendale, which includes Type 2 tree conservation plan TCP-2-010-2020. The applicant is seeking approval for the development of 210 single-family detached dwellings and 62 single-family attached dwellings. This application is for infrastructure and site development only and does not include architecture. A separate detailed site plan for architecture will be submitted at a later date. Slide 2, please. The site is located in the northern portion of Prince George's County in Planning Area 70 and Council District 4. Slide 3, please. More specifically, the site is located with frontage on Prospect Hill Road to the west and Hillneed Road to the east. Slide 5... Slide 4, please. Excuse me. The site is within the OS and R-18C zones and is bounded on all sides by other residential zoned and demolished properties. Slide 5, please. Serial photo illustrates the pre-development conditions of the site, showing the site as a disused golf course and country club. Also shown in the center of the property is the Prospect Hill Historic Site to remain in preservation with this application. Slide 6, please. The site contains considerable topography as shown here...
Can you go back to the historic site? Can you use the arrow to show us the historic site?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So it's actually...
Inside of it.
Pretty much dead center in the property there.
Okay. Right there. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So the site contains considerable topography as shown here, as well as regulated environmental features, for which the applicant is proposing impacts to, but have avoided to the fullest extent possible. Slide 7, please. Master Plan Rite of Way identifies both Prospect Hill Road and Hillneed Road as master plan collector roadways. Slide 8, please. This site rendering shows the proposed development. For orientation, Hillneed Road is now at the top, and the north side of the property is to the left. The single-family attached dwellings can be seen in the northeast corner, or the top left of the screen. The single-family detached dwellings are located throughout the remainder of the site. And the historic property is shown in the center. It's, again, it's pretty much dead center, it's a thick wooded area, as shown on this plan. Also shown, but a little more difficult to see with all the woodland, is a 1.5-mile network of multipurpose trails running throughout the community, as well as two proposed hot lots, one in the northern section, on the left side of the screen, and one in the southern section of the site. Slide 9, please. This slide depicts the future study provided by the applicant from the Prospect Hill Historic Site to the surrounding lots, and shows the vegetative screening provided. Slide 10, please. The study demonstrated that the existing vegetation, combined with topography and proposed landscape upper, will provide sufficient screening for the house. The historic house can be seen here in dark gray, with the proposed dwellings in pink. Slide 11, please. The applicant is proposing one monument sign at the Prospect Hill Road entrance, shown at the top of this slide, and proposing two monument signs at the Hillneed Road entrance, shown here in the center. A sign on each monument will present the community name in black lettering on a gray masonry block inset. Each of the three signs are shown in a variable height brick masonry wall, which scales to approximately nine feet in height in the center, with precast decorative trim along the top and precast caps on top. Stateway signs for residential subdivisions are limited to one sign per entrance and a maximum of six feet in height and 12 feet square. A detailed discussion regarding the signage can be found on Page 5 of the staff report, as well as conditions to demonstrate conformance to the zoning ordinance prior to certification. Slide 12, please. As previously mentioned, a network of trails, of paved trails, is proposed throughout the community. These trails will provide connections to the two proposed hot lots, which will both contain various play equipment, trash receptables, and benches. Slide 13, please. The trails are designed with several exercise stations and rest areas with benches, as shown here. And Slide 14, please. The Type 2 tree conservation plan shows the areas of onsite reforestation and preservation, shown here in orange and green respectively, as well as areas of landscape credit shown in light blue. The plan also illustrates the planted buffer surrounding the historic Prospect Hill House, seen in the central part of the property. The Urban Design Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP-19007 and TCP-2-010-2020 for Fairway Estates at Glendale, with the conditions found on Page 21 of the staff report dated June 2, 2020. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, I have a question. And Mr. Rivera, I need you to think back and also listen up. So my question is, if we can go back to Slides 3 and 4... Let's go back to 3. I'm trying to look at... I know I'm extremely familiar with Hillneed Road, and there's the Schaefer entrance, and then there's the Quick Fox entrance into Northridge. I'm trying to understand where the Hillneed access... What is the Hillneed access point? Is it opposite Schaefer? Or is it opposite Quick Fox, the entrance into Northridge?
So, Madam Chair, Tom Burke, for the record. It's right between the two, I believe. It's going to be pretty much central to that...
Okay. So that's below? Okay. So it's... Okay. So it's not... Because in looking at Slide 4, I was... It was looking as though it was opposite Quick Fox. But it's not, you're saying?
Which is up towards the top. Yeah. That's actually a difference off-site. Yeah.
So it's not going to... That's not going... Okay. So see? Move the arrow right there. Kenny, move the arrow right... Over to the right. Over to the right. Oh, down, down, down. It's not right there. It's not at that... It's not there. That's not the entrance.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's what I'm trying to find out. Okay. What that was. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure where... Okay. So the property, all that is that OS and that little portion of R-18C. So where is the entrance going to be off of Hillneed? You're saying it's below Schaefer? Is it below Schaefer?
That's correct. So it'll be pretty much central...
It's got to be the center of that little part right there. Okay. Okay. That's what I'm trying to understand. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Does the board have any questions on Mr. Burke? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Oh, Madam Chair, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dorner?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Rivera, you're on.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the record, Norman Rivera, representing the applicant in this case on the detailed site plan. You heard the plenary plan back in late March. This is the infrastructure detailed site plan to follow. Happy to report that you can go to lunch early, because we are 100% in agreement with[1714.76] the findings and staff recommendations. So I really don't have to brief you unless you had other questions aside from the access question you just went through with Mr. Burke. Been working with the community a great deal. This property was part of the East Glendale Limited Sector Plant. Two pieces of legislation affected the property. We have meetings with Glendale Citizens Association, Enterprise Road Corridor Commission, many, many adjoining property owners and individuals who called or emailed, we met at various meetings. So, we properly noticed also with the City of Bowie back in December. So we're happy to report that in working with your staff, that's why we're in agreement. There's a number of conditions here related to the environmental program, which we have worked out, and this will be followed by a detailed site plan for architecture at a later date, as we've been working with our builders. But at this point in time, we're happy to answer any questions, and that's it we have for now.
Okay, that's a good presentation, Mr. Rivera, okay. Madam Vice Chair, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Rivera, as well.
Commissioner Dorner?
Yes, very much thank you, no questions.
And I had to ask my questions. I was not one of the people who live right smack there and didn't phone in, so I couldn't phone in to myself. Okay, so your speakers, Mr. Bruce and Mr. Schlegel, are only here if there's any questions. Dr. Stabler, you're only here if there's any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Jubah, anything you needed to add?
Good, Madam Chair.
Mr. Burton, anything you needed to add?
I'm good, Madam Chair.
These are all great answers. Mr. Burke, anything you needed to add?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-19007 and TCP-2-010-2020, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, under discussion. I would just add that clearly you really have worked with the community. The Glendale Citizens Association is extremely active and very vigilant and diligent, and we have no one signed up for today, so that's indicative of the outreach. All in favor indicate by saying aye, Madam Vice Chair.
But aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, 5-0, and then we have the accompanying resolution, Item 10. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Commissioner... And who seconded, was that, you, Madam Vice Chair? Madam Vice Chair, who seconded?
Yes, sure.
Okay. And then, any discussion? All in favor, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Okay, happy Father's Day, Mr. Rivera. Happy Father's Day to our team, happy Father's Day to our staff. Mr. Hunt, I know you're here, on, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Hunt, listen up, listen up. Is there any addition, any additional business to come before the planning board today?
Madam Chair, there's some other business before the board today, thank you.
Hearing none. Planning board is adjourned. I wish a wonderful, happy Father's Day to everyone, all the fathers and fatherlike figures. Planning board is adjourned.